All right, Chairman.
All right, ready to rock?
Ready to rock and roll.
One more time, three times. Again, I appreciate everybody being here. We are in a reconvene meeting, meeting that last week. We were at the Farnar Center, working for the Board of Education, and we reconvened that meeting for tonight to continue discussion on any items. I think my observation is I see many people representing one item. So I'll point at you or something like that. If you can get up or you can have a spokesperson, how do you want to do like that?
Well, Mr. Shields, there isn't any public comment tonight.
No, I just happen to know some people out there that it's not public comment. They're not on the agenda. I just happened to be pointing Dr. Thomas there and say, "It's your time." And then I see the mayor and his group there. It'll be their time.
Isn't that what next, the public hearing is on the budget for next week? Isn't that what's...
But that's the public hearing on the budget. Like, we're going to have some comment that they would like to add to the budget. I think you have to, we listen to that tonight. I've got to see the fire department here, see the SCC here. We'll get to... So I'm trying to point out and keep you going. But also, just to share with you, mention there is a public hearing will be on June 11th at 6:00 PM. That will be on our budget. And all this with questions, please share with us, and we'll try to share back with you. Also, on June 11th, we'll be back in the situation where you can have public comment of the five-minute piece. But also, tonight is kind of a, we didn't have a real agenda. It's a... I know I, Dr. Thomas and I talked and invited him to come tonight. Mike and I talked and the mayor for them to come and bring their requests or comments to the thing. So we can go ahead and get started. Dr. Punt Thomas, also, Dr. Thomas, make sure you introduce your friend with you.
Did you call this morning?
Yeah.
How about your board session?
Pardon my little bit of fraud, but anybody take an opportunity, just go ahead and curse me and those out quickly. Just wanted to take an opportunity to share with you some of our budget requests and needs that you may or may not have seen. And I know that the budget has been put out for public comment and for public demonstration. And I just want to start out by saying thank you for the support that County Manager has provided to us with our budget this year. And I, but I just wanted to go over and just kind of, while we're grateful and thankful for the things that we do receive, the need is always, as everyone else has, is probably more greater than what the capacity has available. But just wanted to share some things with you. As you open the packet on your left-hand side, it's information items that are there, but I do want to draw to your attention the economic value of Southwestern Community College, which is the sheet that you have. It's two or three sheets down on your left-hand side. I think it's always important to be able to just have a conversation of what value the college brings within our region and to our people that we serve. And if you just look at the economic impact and you think about what our requests are due to the impact of what our college provides and presents to each one of our counties and the return on investment that you receive through tax dollars that come from each of the individuals that go through the college and take jobs. And I'll just use one real quick example. Kara Smith, last week when we were doing the career certificates with the public school, they hired 13 RNs last year. 12 of those RNs were hired, that were graduates of SCC. So just that return on investment. And then when you think about all the students that graduated, there were two of them that were going into the, I believe, the EMS that already had jobs as they walked out, being trained and co-training in cooperation, collaboration with the college. So you can see that, and then you can see what the return on investment is for every dollar spent, the students gained $4.10 back. Those, that's real money to you, that's real money to us, that's real money to our economy. The total impact, $104.1 million, or supports about 2,142 jobs. So it's just an opportunity to see what the impact in the, that the college has to you as commissioners for Macon County, but also for our other counties within our region. The other one you have on the other side is Career in College Promise. That's just a collaboration. It shows you, demonstrates what collaborations we have with our public schools. That's where we teach welding, automotive, carpentry, and culinary and things of that nature. Those are just information items there. The other one I draw to your attention is on the right-hand side, which is pulled from the Community College Law of North Carolina, which is 115D-32, which I'm sure you probably all have been made aware of. But this, this is a list of the items that the Community College Law, and this happens to be the 23rd edition, which is the most recent that I have. But that's where I get my information from that I can share with you and say, "Hey, here's where we're coming from as a college. Here's the support we need," based on what's set out by law. And you can kind of go through that. I don't need to read everything to you, but it demonstrates the cost of fuel, water, utilities, janitorial supplies. It's all the operational type stuff that we ask for on a continual basis and on an ongoing basis. So if you look at that list, and then if you go to our budget that I supplied in there for you, that we submit to Macon County each year at the request of the County Manager, what our needs are, we submit those requests and hopefully some of it's funded, all of it's funded, or none of it may be funded, just depending on what maybe is going on in the county budget. I don't know. But on the operating expenses this year, as I said, the County Manager was carried over $115,000 in capital and an additional $50,000. And that provided us enough money to hit our operational goals. But then that left us about $14,000, so we got about $129,090 left to go toward capital. And we're able to hit some of our needs, but if you would take an opportunity to turn to, I've got it listed with the heading Capital Request. And then you show a line item down below, and it says Grove Center on it. You can see that this, these are the requests that have been generated by the individuals that work at the Grove Center. Our maintenance department works with the deans down there. These are things that have been asked for over time. There are a couple that are new on here this year because we had the state come out and provide a kind of a deferment of maintenance and take a look at some of our facilities. And they have some, what they call life safety issues that need to be addressed. They have ADA issues. So we put on our life safety issues, and I believe that if my math works out correctly, it's about $71,000 of life safety. But we have 129, which will leave us about $58,000 to address other issues. And if you look at some of the other, the page after that is Curtis's and Public Safety and Training. You have FCAP report on there. And if you look at the additional FCAP report, you see about $219,000 that are there to replace HVAC units that are out of date, that are on their last leg, and things of that nature that you just, we put on there. They're not things that we make up. They're things that we believe are needed and necessary based on reports that we receive. So these, these are not items that we're pulling out of the air from that standpoint. So if you take the $129,000 from the $1,581,951, again, the operational part of the budget has been covered, but that would leave about $1,184,384 worth of capital. And the $129,000 is probably, is a little bit less than 11% of what the capital needs are to just, some of it's tender loving care, just to keep up, painting, repairs, roofing, things of that nature, replacements of water heaters that were identified from the FCAP, HVAC system that's about $120,000 that's part of that FCAP. So it's just things like that that I would like to share with you and give you the opportunity just to have, have conversation over it. I know the budget's been presented. It's out for public review. It hasn't been voted on completely yet at this point in time, so I just ask for respectfully request some consideration be given to some of the needs that we have presented and concerns that we would draw to your attention.
I want to say thank you for providing that information. And I believe if I'm right on this, at our next meeting, June 11th, is when we'll respond to this via vote, or how do we do this in control?
Well, I mean, if we want to discuss anything about Southwestern Community College's budget, as Dr. Thomas alluded to, SCC requested one and a half million dollars in total to cover, to cover the increased costs this year. And of that, you know, as he mentioned, in the last two years, our funding to Southwestern Community College has increased by 72%. So we've really stepped up with our appropriation to Southwestern Community College in these last two years. You know, it's much like the school system, the needs, much like the county, at our county buildings, the needs are great. I think, you know, while our annual appropriation to the school system is at a current set amount, you know, the needs that they requested in capital far exceeded that amount. But again, going back to what is the expected level of service and what is the level of service that we have provided consistently. And that here, you know, in this case with SCC, we have substantially increased our level of service by 72% over the last two years. But unfortunately, you know, there are needs across a lot of our departments. And while that we can't meet all those needs, as Dr. Thomas said, things like life safety issues, things of that nature, there's ample funding there to cover that. And again, this recommendation for funding at Southwestern Community College is in line with the level of commitment that this board and previous boards, through adoption of previous budgets, have, we've kind of established that baseline. And this budget is, is in line with that, what is now an enhanced baseline from two years ago, substantially 72% more. And also, we just recently, in terms of capital needs at the Grove Center and our Public Safety Training Center, we approved $3,050,000 towards a training facility and the addition of a science classroom at the Grove Center. So that would, that's county money, that $3,050,000 that will be going towards those facilities. So just to highlight our commitment there and that new enhanced level that we are funding Southwestern at.
Dr. Thomas, were, was Southwestern eligible for COVID relief funds or SIR funds? Just curious, I mean, that pot energy...
Entering our budget with those COVID funds like everybody else did to make sure we didn't lay as many people off as we might not have had to have. Air HVAC units and things of that nature at that point.
HVAC is exactly why I asked that question. I just happened to notice.
Yeah, the HVAC's on there.
A lot of HVAC on here.
And I think this year too, we approved a, some additional monies over and above the budget for the replacement of some air handler units.
I would not say, I meant Derek's incorrect, but anything that he said, because he has some numbers and he knows it's 72%. I'd ask you to take a look at the previous seven years prior to the last two and just kind of look at what type of funding the college made or may not have received over those years. It is getting better, as Mr. Rollins, his County Manager, has said. He is stepping up to the plate and realizing that there is a need and there's a return on that investment. But we've, we've had requests in for several years on equipment. And we have things that break that we have to wait until the following year's budget. And you know, I don't know how you handle your things within your organization or wherever, but you know, when things have a need for HVAC units, you know, waiting three months is not always an ideal situation. Safety for other things are a concern for us and for me. It's, the funding is becoming more and more relevant to address some of the needs, but some of these needs have been there for several years and they have not been addressed. And that's all I would ask you to take a look at. Some of this can be pulled off each year's request to you as a county, because a lot of this can be pulled off of the county's website also. So it's there, it's on the records.
I believe the other day when we talked, you had a major concern, and Curtis may bring this up, about your training area out there with...
The driving range?
Yes.
The driving range is beginning to crumble. There's a two-foot by six-foot area that needs to be repaired. We have had that on, that request for resurfacing the driving range to the tune of $280,000, $350,000, to now it's up to $680,000 to repave that whole area, because at one time we were looking at bringing truck driving in. And Curtis needed the extra thickness of asphalt on that. And then it would also take care of some of the renovations that he had and needed. And we used some bond money at that time, Josh, to address those needs, just as we're using that bond money for the fire training tower.
And I think some other important thing to remember, as Dr. Thomas said, you know, some of these things, the county's had a million dollars in appropriation, a fund balance appropriation that's been tied up in the fire safety training facility since probably 2017. That bond money was received, and it's been in the State Construction Office now for the last two years. And so we've had that money tied up to go toward this project that, that is just now, we're hearing from the State Construction Office that we can proceed. So that, you know, that's a big thing in moving forward with these other projects when we're supposedly about to move forward with this one project that's been hanging out there at the state now for 18 months, two years? So you know, a lot of that is a function of, of just the, of things that are out of our control. But nonetheless, with this new commitment, we'll be, be making those improvements out there.
Can I just take a look at, you know, the commitment the county has as, you know, the college laws apply to the counties and what their resources are available? And just, if you have questions, please call me. I'll be more happy to entertain you with questions.
I guess, when you and I talked the other day and looking at this information, yes. The liability. I would say this training center payment area is a liability.
Curtis can't use that part of the training driving center at this point, because, I mean, it dips in those cars or what?
Yeah.
Thomas, you're talking about the big parking area out there by the UPS. That, that's fenced in? Is that the parking lot you're talking about?
Yes, that's up above the UPS.
Yeah. Okay. So the question I have is, every time I go by there, my son lives just on the other side of that. There are all kinds of sports cars out there racing and all this other stuff. How do they, how are they allowed to use your facilities? And is there a price tag for those people? Because there's, there must have been 50 cars out there last weekend, all these fancy sports cars with big spoilers and all this, and zooming all over the place.
I'm not sure I can directly answer your question. I do know Curtis has a couple of car shows that he has held in the past and they've asked to use that facility to address the car shows. The car shows, once they're finished, my understanding is they make a donation into it as a form of a scholarship for public safety and training students. So they pay back for what they're allowed to use. Now whether or not they're running around in circles, I can't speak to that.
One of those cars the other day when I drove by, it looked like it was going to roll. He was, I mean, they're out there either racing or whatever the case may be. But that is not normal activity for Southwestern Community College. And in my mind, if it's a liability problem and asphalt's that bad, those people should never be allowed to be on that parking lot. And, or if they're going to be, then let them hitch in and help pay for the resurfacing of that parking lot. I mean, it's beautiful cars, but it's, it turns into, I mean, they have cones set up all over the place and having road course races and everything else out there.
I don't want to poke on a bruise, but CDL vehicles, commercial drivers, that's a serious need here locally, I mean nationally. Is there any other community close by that's got some kind of a CDL training course?
Here, it's looking at it. The cost is astronomical, so they partner with Caldwell Community College. And then it's what's available for trucks to come out into after they do the didactic, and then they have to do the hands-on training. Part of the concern with that, Josh, is the fact that they don't have the surface where they can run the trucks as heavy as they are.
You know, trucks need, I mean, trucks like that can be on gravel. They don't have to be on asphalt.
I can't speak to that because all the ones that I've seen have been on asphalt. For what purpose, I have no reason to, I mean, I can't.
Well, just, I'm advocating for that, just so you know. But there's a big need, go ahead.
Well, I have to interject, the DMV driver licenses did come out and tried to work with us a little more for do the CDL testing out there. They looked at our surface and found it was insufficient to hold the weight of the trucks that they needed to. So that's one of the reasons why we never did move forward with any CDL. And we can't do fire trucks on the track as well, just because of the weight with them too.
I understand.
Commissioner Sherrill, the, they have offered, if there's anything repairs, the club's do. They try to hold themselves accountable. If they cause a rut in the side, they come out there and fix it. So you know, they're, they've been, they've been very good. I know it looks like that, but they, they have expensive cars and they're trying to take care of them when they're doing that. But they, the Highlands Sports Car Club is probably the one you've seen out there.
Seen several.
We talked to them, they wanted to use the track. They were using the center cross from airport in Asheville and found this was a much better facility. We talked to them about a donation in memorial. Some officers who had attended Southwestern had been killed in the line of duty. And they immediately made a $2,000 donation for scholarships in their honor. So they support that annually too. And if I get any calls from neighbors about noise or whatever, I call the president. They take care of the issues on that too. But I don't, I mean, I'll be glad to have a conversation with them if it's, because the one thing I said, we're not doing burnouts, we're not doing donations. It's a timed event that they're trying to do on that as well.
Oh, I enjoy sitting out there on the road watching them. I mean, they're...
We have a Corvette club coming out of Greenville that's going to, and then there's a horse club out of Atlanta that comes once a year and makes a donation towards the scholarship.
And then you always have the residual economic value that's added to the fact that people are here from out of this county that are coming in. And so you have, there's a big picture there also, just that we all can look at.
And you say it's the Highlands Motoring Festival?
Highlands Sports Car Club.
Okay.
And then there's a Corvette club out, it's out of Greenville, South Carolina, that comes up, and then the Horse Club. So there's three clubs that, that we have used it. And then the one club will do some teen driving stuff for those that sometimes, talking about skid and the importance of a seatbelt, airbag, stuff like that too. So we kind of try to tie that into some of the training too, because it benefits some of the teen drivers.
Well, maybe it's a conversation that we can all have together and maybe get this resurfaced without the expense being all on the taxpayers' Macon County. Thank you.
Just one more question I was going to ask, is the funding, you know, in the same time we've increased this funding, start from, per the 2023 numbers, over the same time of the funding increase, it looks like the enrollment in Macon County's dropped pretty significantly since 2019. So does the funding go further now? With, like, 2019, it was 24, 22 Macon residents. And in 2022, which is the latest I could get, it was 1,827 Macon residents. So I was just wondering if that decline of about 700 there, does that funding go, does that funding go further now?
If you're talking 1,800 and some odd, are you talking with continuing education curriculum?
Right, I'm just, the total number, yeah, I just, I didn't know that. Does the funding go further now?
Are part of those 1,800 students, are they driving over the mountain going, "Right"? Just so, I can't answer that unless I look specifically at the numbers. My gut tells me that fundamentally, no. And the reason I say that is because an HVAC unit's an HVAC unit. If I'm running an institution or an organization and I have to have an HVAC unit, it's going to cost me to either repair it or replace it. I can shut a room off that would help save on electricity potentially, you know, things of that nature. But it's, you're, you're talking pennies in the scheme of the last trace budget is also...
Decline.
Yeah, no, it has declined, but we're also now beginning to see an uptick. So our numbers are starting to come back. I think COVID is, kind of hate to keep saying that word like everybody else, but I think it's starting to, we're starting to see an uptick in our numbers. So we're hopeful that it'll continue that way, is all. I do appreciate your time, just an opportunity to share with you, but I hope that you'll just have conversation, take into consideration. Give me a call if you need any questions answered.
Let me ask, let me ask.
Um, no, I just said, "Thank you, sir."
Let me ask, want to think that for us as commissioners, if we make sure we look in at your capital request detail, you got the Grove Center, then you got to your...
Public safety.
Yeah, Public Safety Training Center.
We'll try to break it out in that way, yes.
Yeah. How are we, how are you getting by with, I'm not saying it's intentional. When I see replacement pair ramps and stairs, modular units, ADA, and how are you dodging the bullet?
Well, we're just making Band-Aid repairs. Age, the modular units were donated by Macon County Public Schools 15 years ago.
Before I, before I came.
Before you came, so we had ramps built, and it's the same ramps and stairs. And we've just been making repairs as, as the board ran away and so.
I'm not picking on Genie teams, but I see them in here. I see something like a fire alarm panel replacement, notice that thing? How are we not doing that, I guess?
I think those are a couple of the items that'll be funded this year into that $71,000 life safety, because that comes directly out of the FCAP report, where the deficiencies are... are stated, whether it's the roofing, whether it's the exit lights, things of that nature. Just shields, so that's all.
And I believe the other day, and I was just being a dummy with it, could you share again what F cap is? I think it's of importance, but I didn't know at that time what it called.
I, I can't tell you exactly what the acronym stands for, but it's a state construction office where we as a state agency can call the state construction agency, and they will send someone out and do a valuation of our buildings, and they, they look at windows, they look at everything from inside out, and then they do a report and let us know, these are things you need to start addressing, or it's not going to continue to work at some point in time, so, anyway.
I think that's what, the other day when we were talking to F cap, it kind of stuck up here of importance because the state was putting of importance on it.
Right.
And again, I'll use that little word, how are we dodging these bullets?
Until this year, we were just not doing them, addressing them, but we just got the report a year ago also on the updated report. This report came out, I believe, two years ago, actually came out in February of '23. So, we had a couple of items in last year's budget that we, we tried to put in at the last moment, but then we were able to more accurately address those life safety ADA, and then they continued with Mr. Shields. So, up until this time, we weren't addressing them, not that they weren't there, it's just we weren't addressing them.
So, these are county-owned properties?
State-owned.
State-owned properties.
That makes it very challenging to understand sometimes for individuals, and that's where just the conversation of education to help people kind of feel and understand this, this for us, the Community College Law of North Carolina is what we refer to in Section 115D-32 comes back and says, if you as a county are willing to put a extension campus, center, whatever facilities within your county, then you're responsible for the following. And the state has that as law by 115D. So, it does make it sometimes confusing, is it a county facility or is it a state facility? These are state-owned facilities.
Okay, so the HVAC systems and stuff, who, who would actually identify those when they're failing? Is that, who, who handles the maintenance for the state facilities? And who recognizes those? I mean, because it sounds like you have identified the problem and the issues. Is it something that the county really has never been part of identifying these issues since it is a state-owned property?
I'm not sure that the county's been 100% going out and checking those on a routine or regular basis. I think Curtis and his team, if something goes wrong with one of the units, then a call is made to maintenance, and there's some, some confusion on that also because it's, you can read through there that the maintenance of it is the county's responsibility. So, county manager has to build in money in his budget to send an HVAC person out there. If we have issues of concern for maintenance, whether it's plumbing, HVAC, windows broken, or anything that's minor or major, that falls back onto the county as far as a maintenance goes, just like it would be for your county buildings and facilities.
Just like this year, we approved additional money, you know, they had identified their problem at the growth center, they brought the funding request in here, and we approved funding outside of the budget to go towards replacing that system. So, that's how it's worked, it's worked well. The, if you look, the growth center, I think, is the most, the highest valued property that the county owns, the highest valued building that we own. So, it is a, a very nice building that, that we've taken care of.
Of the money that you received, or Southwestern Community College received, was any of that used to address these longstanding deficiencies and capital issues? Not enough to handle?
Not enough to handle everything, you know, we're a small institution, we didn't get the millions of dollars that some of the larger universities got and some of the larger community colleges got. But we tried to address as many of those issues as we could with funding, but we also managed it with resources, human resources, to make sure that we were trying to save people.
Foundation benefits.
So, we could get through, well, not necessarily. We didn't do pay raises or any of that kind of stuff with any of that money, because you got to remember, when that money's gone, it's gone. Reoccurring funding's got to come from somewhere, right? So, I'm just, I'm just telling you, you know? I, so, my team, myself and my team managed it from a standpoint, it's non-recurring funding. We'll take on projects that we can take on, if where there's a program that needs support to, to kind of give it a boost to get us through COVID and hopefully make it continue to grow, we'll use those funds for that. If it doesn't work, then that program goes away. We've lost probably at least four or five different programs from civil engineering for, you know, DOT is dying for people to come out and be surveyors. We can't find people to take that program, so. AB Tech closed theirs, we closed ours, Blue Ridge opened theirs, and I think they've got like three or four, five or six people in that program, so. And that, those are great jobs, 60, 70, 80,000 dollars a year. Two, three years later, they're in the six-figure. I'd love to have, we just pushed it on pause, we didn't kill it, so we can always bring it back if we need to. So, yeah, we've managed it from the standpoint of what we're going to do to keep the institutions all the, also, if that makes sense.
Thank you for what you all do, good, Curtis, and rest of your day.
But also, I think you have a good relationship with our legislators and.
We do, and, yeah. Sometimes it's good enough to, it comes back, maybe. I won't go any further on that one, but, yeah, it, it also helps create a partnership and collaboration between county and, and the college then also. So, we, we've got a $10 million indoor firing range that we'll be hopefully designing this summer and over the fall, and some construction projects under Jackson Campus then also.
Could you introduce your guest there?
Amanda Millicent is a grad student from North Carolina State University. She's working on her doctoral program. I've had the honor and privilege to mentor her for the last two years as field work experience. She is currently employed at Guilford Technical Community College, and she comes out, I guess in the last two years, she's been out here four or five times, trying to take her to these types of meetings to see the connection, how they operate, the conversations, and just put her in front of people and have conversations, so.
And of course, you know Curtis.
Mr. Dowd, have things he wants to share with us?
No, as always, we appreciate the support that he gives us on an ongoing basis and that, you know, we are a part of the community, we are a part of Macon, the biggest thing that I want you to know. 99, over 99% of our public safety professionals train with us, and it's our job to make sure that we do the best thing we can for them too. We have great working relationship down in Franklin, you know, Franklin Fire Department, it's nothing that we can't call, Macon Sheriff's Department, Warren Cave and his team too. It's a constant teamwork that we have to serve our citizens, and we have the honor of serving those who serve as well. And being a lifelong resident of Macon County, I understand the importance to support our education, K through 12 and higher education and what that is. And I know it's tough, and all the county operations that you do and, and managing that in and of itself, you know, I see some gray hairs in Mr. Rollin there that weren't there a few years ago, but it's a tough job, and you can't please everybody, and we're just trying to do what's right. And, you know, as long as you do what's right, you can lay your head down at night, you don't have to work.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Curtis.
Thank you.
Finger points, everybody's getting over this, man.
It's not the job, Curtis, he's just six, five years, he's done about five or six kids.
About a kid a year.
Mike, since you and I've talked, I'm going to point at you to introduce your, the mayor, whoever, whoever's going to speak to us.
You're standing on this side there, so.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you all for your time, thank you for what you do for our county. I know very well that sometimes an often unappreciated service that you do, people don't understand the issues you have to deal with, the decisions that you have to make, and they're always popular. And I'll have to tell you that. Thank you for your time tonight, because we're just here as representing the town of Franklin, the town board, and our fire department. Our, our fire department is not just the town of Franklin, you know, it's the fire district of a lot of area outside, outside of our town limits. As a matter of fact, Chief Orman gave us a report last night at our board meeting showing the number of calls and so forth that we had, and the number of calls actually outside of the city limits are much higher than what we have inside of town. And the fact of the matter is, and he's got statistics, I'll let him quote those two if he'd like to do that, but out of the total number of calls throughout the county, Franklin Fire and Rescue does a major share over. That's because most of the people are right here, and the roads are right here, and the accidents are right here, and so you're going to have a high rate. It's important to make sure when they call the county 911 center that somebody's able to respond. And we're able to do that with the town of Franklin because we have 10 full-time firemen who are there ready to crack that truck up and head out as soon as a call comes in. And oftentimes, our firemen are on the scene even before EMS arrives sometimes because they're, they're there. But a couple of years ago, we, we started looking at the need to, to replace equipment, you know, we have some, some fire trucks, a pumper and a tanker, and we really need to replace those. And they still run, I mean, if it was my own personal fire truck, I'd probably just keep on driving like I do my 1978 Ford. But they have to be certified and approved by the state in order to put in fire service, and they don't always stay long enough. And so, sometimes they reach the age, the hours, or the miles on there when they have to be replaced. The problem is now, after COVID, to get a fire truck in this country, it takes almost two years after you put the order in to get it. And the minimum cost on a truck, like we're looking at, is over a million dollars. That's hard for a small town or a small county to be able to afford. And so, we, we, we looked at it last year, discussed it with the budget and the fire chief and the, and the fire department, and with our town manager about what it would take in order to acquire those two vehicles that are needed by the fire department. And of course, you all know, we went through a tax revaluation last year, which was a lot of fun for everybody, not everybody, but some people. But I'm recalling my days as a tax collector and a tax supervisor, and I know how that works too. But we looked at, at adjusting the tax rate last year during revaluation, not to be able to cover the cost of operation, the cost of repairing and replacing these vehicles, and we ended up with revenue neutral tax rate, which is what the board of commissioners do. And most people are not aware that all fire departments throughout the state that are in fire tax districts, the fire tax has to be approved by the board of county commissioners, it can't be approved by the town, even though the town operates in somewhat of a departmental priority with the town, with the fire department. But all the money to operate the Franklin Fire and Rescue comes from the fire tax, covers inside and outside of the city. And so, we looked at it this year, and, and our chief has presented a budget, and our manager has put that in, the proposed budget. We had a public hearing on the town's budget last night, nobody showed up to speak about it, but part of that budget includes a slight increase in the fire tax in order to pay for the continuing cost of operation as well as replacement of the vehicles that are needed for fire safety. And so, we're coming back this year to send a budget request this year that Mr. Rollin has. I think the tax, estimated tax rate to supply all these needs this next year would be seven cents. I think it's over five cents now, but it'd be around seven cents, and that would put us in position to be able to continue to fund this. Some people ask, well, why don't the town put some more money into it? Well, that argument and that, that discussion has come up several times during our town board meetings. And the fact of the matter is, if you live in town, you also live in the county. And if you live in town, you get the other benefit of getting to pay town taxes as well. And so, you're paying fire tax whether you live inside or outside of town. If we take money out of the general fund of the town and put it into the fire department, we basically, in some cases, penalize those people who live in town because they're paying twice for the same service that people outside of town get by paying their fire tax. So, there's an argument on, on that side about that. So, the total fire department, as I say, is totally operated as like the other fire departments in the county based on the fire tax. I was serving as county manager here many, many years ago when the fire tax went into place. At that time, it was, it was based on, only on property that had an improvement on it. You may remember that, some of you do, Paul probably does. And, and it was at a maximum of, what was it, $120 or something like that? And so, that was when it first got started. Of course, it had to go through the general assembly, several changes, and now it's the regular fire tax like most of the municipalities and counties throughout the state have. But I'm just, we're just here tonight to support the fire department's request, to have enough money to operate, to provide the life safety issues that we talked about here earlier, to protect the lives and property and provide for the safety of the people in our jurisdiction, inside and outside of the city limits in our fire district. So, on behalf of the town and the town board, if the entire town board was here, they would say that they unanimously support this request from our fire department through a board to consider adjusting the tax rate in order to be able to do what they would like to do this year. So, we have with us tonight council member Mike Lewis, the good-looking guy with the hat over here, and beside him is our illustrious town manager, Amy Owens, who does a fantastic job. And so, and then our chief, Chief Orman, Chief Ben Orman is here as well, and one of our other board members, Mr. Culpepper is here, who supports us as well. And I would like to give any of them the opportunity to share anything with the board that you would like to hear at this time. So, Mike, if you want to step forward, I'll let you, and I'll tell you this, on behalf of Mr. Lewis here, Mr. Lewis has an ongoing issue with kidney stones, and he is probably dealing with one right now, so if he acts a little bit different than he normally does, there's a good reason for that, Mr. Lewis.
We understand.
And I'm not going to talk as long as Jack, so you're going to have to worry about that. I'm going to start out by saying that I don't like taxes any more than anybody else, and I'm going to stand here and tell you, in my tenure as a town council, two years ago, I voted against a tax increase, and I was extremely happy to vote for a tax debrief last year. So, I'm not all about taxes. Second of all, last year, we were put in an order for, for one of those fire trucks that Mayor Orman talked about, and it's over a million dollars. And to, to be able, because we didn't have the, the fire tax where we needed it last year, our taxpayers put forth $225,000, quarter of a million dollars to fund the deposit for that fire truck. So, there's 10 of us standing here right now. So, what, let's say we build a, somewhat of a little neighborhood out, it's not a town, it's unincorporated, it's just us, we want to buy, build, hey, let's build us a fire truck so we, one of our houses catches fire. Only four of us pay for it, the other six don't. That's what we're looking at here. 4,000 people subsidized a fire, part of a fire truck, 10,000 people that do not live in town and do not pay taxes. So, I just want you to think about that, and you're going to hear from other people and I, so that was, that was the big thing I wanted y'all to talk about. And I've heard several of you over the years talk about fairness to the taxpayer. It doesn't get much more unfair than that situation. So, just want y'all to think about that, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
Gentlemen, ladies, I didn't want to talk, but I guess I will. I've done a lot of stupid things in my life, but running into a burning building is not one of them. So I'm not an expert on fire departments, what they need, if they need a new truck, if they don't need a new truck. Chief keeps telling me, and has been telling me for three years, that we need this stuff. I actually voted against the town spending the $200,000 last year to subsidize the fire department because I didn't think it was fair for the 4,000 in-town residents to subsidize the much larger fire district. Because I don't think it's fair. I think the fire district should be able to pay for its own way. If you need political cover, like, you can blame me. That's fine. You can say that I said this needs to be done, because I do think it needs to be done. I'm trusting chief on this, that we need what we need. And if you don't want to fund us, which is obviously your prerogative, I just ask you to tell us, how do you see us budgeting this? Like, send us some guidance. How do you want us to do this? If you don't want to fund the increase that we need to cover the equipment that we need, help us make sense of it. Help us figure out a way to move forward to where the people that need this coverage are getting the appropriate coverage. And that may be a long-term conversation that takes years about redistricting, but I'm fine with having that conversation. But right now, there's a need that I believe, and we're up here asking you guys for your blessing. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Evening, afternoon, whatever. I'm not really sure how to.
I just want to try and put things into a little perspective for you. The mayor talked about the number of calls and how many we run and all those sorts of things. That scale chart at the top breaks down the call distribution for last year. Now, that doesn't include Highlands and Nantahala. This is our surrounding departments that we serve with. The average number of emergency responses in our county for the average fire department is 335. Last year, we ran 1,925. That's almost six times the amount of emergencies that everybody else is running. And when you break it down as to how much it costs to run an emergency response, the average cost of an emergency response in the county is $1,183. We're doing it for almost half at $620. But yet, we're offering and supplying a superior level of service that's not provided anywhere else in the county. The budget I submitted was for a seven cents tax balanced at that. If you do give us this tax increase that we desperately need, our cost per call will still only be $915 per call, well below the average cost that it's costing the average citizen in this community for an emergency. And for many years, these fire departments, ours included, have been operating in a reactive mode. We get to the point where we can't pay the bills no more, and we have to come and beg for money. And we get enough to pay the bills, and that covers this year. And then next year, inflation happens. The fire department's a business, just like many of you run. We need to be operating in a proactive manner. Looking forward at Franklin Fire Rescue, what's that look like for us? We ordered one pumper. I still need to order a tanker. That's $650,000 if I order it today. Next year, it'll be $800,000. In the last four years, the cost of a fire truck's gone up 64%. That's inflation. Beyond that, just like every other department in this county, volunteer turnout is decreasing every day. We rely on our volunteers to supplement that full-time staff we have. So the next step in our growth to meet the demands that's put on us by the system is to hire a fourth person. Right now, we currently run three per shift. We will need to add a fourth sooner than later. But before I can do that, we're at operating capacity of our current station. So before I can get the money to add personnel, I'm going to have to spend two to three million dollars to upgrade our building that was built in 1985 to expand it to accommodate the growth that we're going to need in our future. So that seven cents helps us start being proactive for the future of the growth that's coming for this department. I just would appreciate your support on this. And I'm hoping any questions you may have about the number for 40.
Well, chief, as I've stated many times, I am retired from the fire service, and I joined the fire department as a volunteer. And I served 21 and a half years as a volunteer, and I fought every step of the way of any pay. And ultimately, I lost it. I believe Highlands Fire Department was the last department to agree to go to this tax base as long as the tax revenue that was collected would return to the district. Highlands has the lowest fire tax rate there is. And I have a few questions for you. You say you ran 1,925 calls. How many of those calls were actually fire calls? And how many of them were medical calls? And how many of them were off the wall? Because I pulled this record, and it seems to me like the last count that I had, almost 1,400 of those calls were first responder calls and medical calls.
We average approximately 75% as emergency medical calls, yes, sir.
All right. And, okay. And also, and I'm not sure how it works down here. I know in Highlands, when we had a first, or a fire call, a structured fire, we had Scaly Mountain as our mutual aid company, and Cachers as well, and Sotola. And if it really needed, depends on what side of Highlands it was, we were, I'm not bringing Colosseum. There's been a few calls that you guys have had in Franklin that every department in Macon County were involved in.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So through this process, you just completed a substation, did you not?
It's being completed as we speak.
Okay.
Through money we got from the state.
And it's out on the Silver Road?
Correct. Across from Franklin Ford.
Are you aware that, well, you probably don't, but I own a house in Echo Valley. And I can almost stand on the porch of that house and hit the roof of Mountain Valley Fire Department. But I'm in Franklin District.
Right.
Now, so that tells me that Mountain Valley Fire Department has to travel through your district to get to their district. And so therefore, what, I mean, I get it. I have all the respect in the world for firefighters, and I like what Mr. Culpepper said. He said, "You can't pay me enough money to run into a burning building." I have a T-shirt on the back of it that says, "Nobody can pay me to burn, run into a burning building. I volunteer to do it." And through this whole process, and I can speak for Highlands, and I've said it before, you have paid staff, and you have volunteers. Well, then the mentality of some of the volunteers is, well, you've got paid guys up there. I'm not going. There's some friction in these volunteer fire departments because of the pay. And I'm not saying it's in Franklin. I know it's in Highlands, because I communicate well. And I also know that some of my team members that I was on there with that are still there are stating, now that we're going to paid staff, their input is no longer needed. That it's the fire chief, it's the assistant chief, and it's the town manager that makes all these decisions. And they don't even have their normal business meetings any longer. And so it seems to me like in these fire calls, and you guys are, I mean, I see you all the time out there. And I'm grateful for the job that y'all do. I miss firefighting. But I signed up to serve. I didn't sign up to make a living. And you're right. Volunteerism in fire service is dying. And that's why last year, we talked about eventually, we're going to have to have a full-paid fire service if we're going to have fire service, and we have to offer fire service. So your calls, I would assume, and I hate to do that, but those are mutual aid calls as well, are they not?
Yes, that's all total responses.
Okay.
And on those mutual aid, you mentioned aid coming to help us, and they do. It's automatic when there's a structured fire and two additional departments are paged out. When we go mutual aid to the surrounding departments around us, at least 75% of the time, if you stand in the front yard and see he goes into the burning building to put out the fire, it's Franklin. We're having to supplement because other departments don't have the staffing. The volunteers aren't showing up. So we're not just fighting our fires. We're putting out other people's fires as well. In many instances, when I roll up, I'm asked to take command and run their fire scene because they don't have command staff present to run their own call. So the money that we're asking to support doesn't just support Franklin. It's the whole surrounding area.
And I get it. I mean, you have two paid firemen on staff. Well, it's pretty much useless until the third man, the fourth man comes in, because I went on a structured fire one time. I had the engineer out there, and I was on the end of a three-inch hose bouncing all over the ground trying to, so.
We run three.
Yes.
And most everyone else runs one part timer, which means a driver can get a fire truck to the scene, and then there's nobody to fight fire. And we're happy to go in to assist. We all served even in one mission. But that cost is expensive, and we're doing it a whole lot cheaper than everybody else in the county. So we're just asking for more to help supplement the cost.
Then we talk about the insurance there. And it's my understanding, I called the insurance company. You guys are four rating?
We're three.
Three rating, okay. And Mountain Valley Fire Department is a five.
Okay.
Okay. So I checked with the insurance company with my house over on Echo Valley. If that house went from Franklin Fire District to Mountain Valley Fire District, what are my insurance savings? And they told me it was zero, because there's no break after five. It's there. If you have a Class 5, 4, in your case, a 3, there's no reduction in your insurance rate. So I guess my point is, why would that, why would we not somehow shrink your district to help offset these calls and expand the other ones' districts?
You can do that to a detriment to those we serve, because everyone else that you take out of our district will go to a lesser level of care. They would then call 911, see a fire truck pull up in their yard with a driver standing there waiting for someone to come fight fire. Instead of now in our district, when they call 911, they know three people are showing up, ready to fight fire, perform extrication, rescue, whatever needs to be done without having to wait on anybody. So they would suffer from a lesser service.
So, okay. But that's only in your district.
Well, you talked about shrinking our district.
Right. But if Mountain Valley actually had my house, and the fire department is sitting stone-throe away, then your staff would not respond to that if it was in Mountain Valley. So I understand it's not your district. But at the same time, the timing is the same because if I have a structured fire over at my house on Mountain Valley, or in Echo Valley, and that pager goes off, I could almost, almost guarantee you that somebody from that fire station would be at my house before you.
Correct. You're on the house. It's our limit. But again, you have one person with a truck that's not capable of doing anything else, other than sitting there.
Yeah. I mean, I get it. I mean, you guys are busy. You do a fantastic job.
On our district, that was a decision made long before I got here. I don't know why they were allowed to build a fire station as close to the district line. I think back then, there were some hopes of them expanding their district, but they didn't have the supports to it.
So what would it look like if Franklin Fire Department became a municipal fire department solely, and the town of Highlands became a municipal fire department for the town of Highlands, and then the county pays for fire service outside city limits? Because it says, let me see where my letter is here, that I read from, I believe it was, no, I was looking for the letter that we received. I believe it was from the town manager.
Yes, sir. That was the initial request.
Okay, right here. "We all want to provide the best services for the citizens of Franklin and Macon County, but not being able to incorporate increases in costs due to a decision made by another governmental entity is not fair to the Franklin Fire and Rescue. It feels like a punishment for having a professional fully-staffed department." So if you have been keeping up with the capital improvement projects that this board of commissioners is facing, and trying to hit our taxpayers with increases, and I watch, I watch around the world, all this economy and stuff, and it's looking ugly. And I understand you need equipment and stuff. But maybe, just maybe, if that district were to shrink, I don't even know how many, or how many members Mountain Valley has, but it seems to me like they're fully staffed, the last I heard. And then Nantahala's overloaded, and I don't even think they pay anything per call. And that was a big discussion. Anytime you put money in anything, it becomes a nightmare. And so I'm just asking that question based on this, this paragraph here, as to you guys are being punished by this board of commissioners by not extending this, raising this fire tax for our taxpayers in Macon County. And so I think the conversation probably should be had to look at shrinking the district or possibly going in and letting the two municipal fire departments be governed by the, your fire department being governed by the town of Franklin and Highlands Fire Department being governed by the town of Franklin.
We can shrink our district to town proper, and the town can set their own fire tax rate. So then they're not, we're not relying on anybody else to set our income. You do that, two things are going to happen. Every, the 10,000 people we serve outside of our town proper, their services will be diminished. On top of that, all that district will have to be absorbed by our surrounding partnering departments. And you will be overtaxing them in a situation where they're already struggling to keep up now. And you would be adding more geographical location, more population, more calls for service when they're barely keeping the doors open now. So it's a lose-lose if we do that. And the reason I presented these numbers and the large disparity in the amount of emergencies run and the cost per call is I'm asking y'all to no longer look at us as just a volunteer fire department. The days of Franklin volunteer fire department are gone. We are still supplemented by volunteers, and we depend on them. But we are a full-time career department, and we're asking you to treat us as such.
Let's see, there was one more. Oh, just one more question. I'm curious to know, every year, there's two departments that sends out letters asking for donations, and your department is one of them.
Correct.
How is that, how is that paid? Are you using taxpayers' money to send the same taxpayers a letter asking for donations? Or are you raising the funds somewhere and using those? And also, the second part of that question is, how much money did you actually raise, and what did you do with the money?
Each year varies. Last year, I want to say we raised around 20, 22,000. That money is used to... That money is used to typically replace aging and broken equipment, anything from fire boots and helmets to pagers and radios. This year, we, the executive board, all of our officers, elected to roll that money because we know we've bought a new fire truck. And when that new fire truck gets here in two and a half years, it's going to cost money to equip it. So we're banking that money, so we'll have that money to purchase the equipment needed for the new fire truck. And we also raise additional funds. If you've ever been on the event on Main Street, we're set up handing out literature on fire safety and home safety and also selling merchandise, trying to raise more money and do everything that we can and scrape every penny together to keep the doors open and keep supplying a superior level of service.
I have a question for you, Chief. Why do you feel like the volunteer are declining?
You can't get people to work now when they're getting paid. Voluntarism across the country is diminishing in every aspect, let alone in the industry where you're asking people to go in for free and risk their life.
Now, for your department, do you... What you're trying to say is, do you respond to more calls in town or outside of town limits?
It's about 50/50.
50/50. You know, I feel for everybody involved because honestly, you know, we brag about having the lowest tax rate so much, but at the same time, you always hear, "We want more, we want more." And the problem that people are not understanding is, you can't have more without having money coming in. And it really doesn't make sense, it doesn't add up. I feel for all you guys involved in this because I go out on some of these calls with you guys as well and I love to see how all these departments work so well together. It's like a well-oiled machine. But it's going to become increasingly more difficult, especially without having the right kind of equipment to be able to serve people. So I don't know that the public is always fully aware of what you guys are up against, you know, in the way that you're trying to serve and your inability to have like the right equipment to be able to take care of the jobs that you want to take care of. I'm pretty certain everybody in this county would hate to call 911 and first of all not have anybody there to answer. Right? I would think that everybody would hate it if somebody would answer and they need an emergency call to have a response that says, "We're sorry, we don't have any units to send out."
You say that just last week, we had to respond to another district's call. Motor vehicle accident, vehicle upside down in the creek. We had to go. They only had one person show up. Why you got someone trapped in the car underwater? So it happens.
So I'm against every tax increase just like anybody else, but at the same time, I'm not foolish enough to think that I should ask for more in my community without realizing the money's got to come from somewhere. It's got to come from somewhere.
And we're still doing business at a cheaper cost than everybody else, within the average, rather, sorry.
I just appreciate that value, what you guys do and I know what you guys up against, it's pretty rough, man.
Hello, Mr. Chairman? And you, Commissioners? I just want to add, part of this is, the town can't pass their budget unless you guys pass yours because you set the tax rate for the fire districts. I don't want to have to come back next year and do this again, again, and again, knowing that I have a fire truck that's already been ordered, that we still have to pay for when we could be proactive, go back to the seven cents that you granted us two years ago. I mean, I get that valuations went up between then and now, but seven cents is still seven cents. For a $200,000 house, that's $35. So, you know, the letter that was actually written by the executive board, not by the town manager, and signed and sent in unanimously about this. You have the opportunity, I mean, let's just be blunt, blame it on the town. It's the town asking for this tax. It's seven cents. You guys don't have to answer for that. Let them come and talk to us. We're the ones that'll have to justify where that money goes, how it's spent, the things that people get for that seven cents. Yes, part of them are in town, but the majority of those individuals are out of town. And my door is always open, the chief's door is always open. The town council serves as the board of directors for Franklin Fire and Rescue. They unanimously supported this and they just would respectfully request that you would honor that for us, at least for this year. Until if we have to revisit the districting. It becomes something to keep looking at in years to come. But for this year, knowing the purchase that has already been made, knowing the burden that's already been placed on the in-town taxpayers to include that additional $200,000 just to get the down payment on this vehicle, not to order the two that we need, but just the one, the request is respectfully to go back to that seven cents. That means approximately $397,000. Yes, that is a big number and yes, County Manager Roland has worked very hard to get his budget down below what it was last year and props for that. You have done a fantastic job in all your budget prep. But I can't pass a budget for the town. And we can't move forward into the next year without your help. And that's what it is, it's your help. It's not a contest, it's not us versus them. It's, we're asking for help, just like nonprofits do, just like any other thing does. We support you guys in your activities, you support us in ours. And that's all we're asking for, is just that continued support, at least for this year. And give us the opportunity to look at alternatives in the future.
To me, I would say like, I completely support you guys, you know, in this. I just wish there was a better way, like more ways to explain in better detail for everyone to understand why that increase would be necessary. You know what I mean? But I mean, and I get it from this perspective, but I just, I guess, don't have the reason of being able to explain in better detail why this would be so helpful.
Five trucks, multiple calls, start-stop, start-stop, start-stop. Where's the vehicles at?
We just had to... One of our trucks did run medical calls. $30,000 on it. We just had to spend $7,000 to replace the turbolane because these trucks get run so much harder than your personal trucks. Maintenance and fuel and stop and go, like you said.
Equipment you're replacing the trucks, you are replacing the trucks, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And are they at the end of their life?
They are well past.
The trucks are...
Based on age.
We have one truck that is 31 years old, but it's still in service.
Another truck is 29 years old. NFPA requires fire trucks to be placed in reserve status after 15 years and completely retired at 25 years. And we were running stuff at times frontline response for a 30-year-old truck.
Let me ask you a question. I'm not totally familiar with the criteria that we ask our departments, all the fire departments, to go through when they're requesting additional funds. And from what I just heard you say there, you've already approached your people that you're responding to. That's part of the criteria of getting approval or okay the, I'm going to say, seven cents. You've already gone through your, I believe I heard you say there, you've gone through a committee?
The board of directors is the town council for the town of Franklin. The board of directors of the fire department.
And they've agreed to this.
They unanimously sent you the letter in March.
And that's one of the criterias we ask each community to go through if they're going to ask for an increase, to make sure you involve your community and for them to support it. And maybe like Mr. Antoine was talking about here, understand why you're asking that increase. And I think you've done that.
That was the intent.
Yeah, I think you've done that and I want to say thank you.
Yeah, one more thing, when I added up all the budget requests for the 11 fire departments in Macon County, if my math is correct, it was $7,582,907 for the 11 fire departments. And I also stated this some time ago, if, you know, we're getting close to, if not there already, of running a full-paid fire service in Macon County. And I don't know how far we go with this before, you know, and that's from what you're saying, you're going to someone else's district that don't have the manpower and you're controlling and you're taking that scene over. And that's grateful. And so the real conversation, it sounds like, is going to be paid fire service in Macon County. And I don't want, I think this tax money has, in my mind, has ruined the fire service in Macon County. And I don't mean that in a negative way, it's just, there's too much friction and I never remember the pager going off, us not having a response to that call and...
Times have changed since then. If it wasn't for that fire tax money right now, there would be no fire service in Macon County, I can promise you that. It's the only thing keeping them afloat.
Yeah.
It's not just the old days where we sell barbecue and buy a fire truck and everybody runs. Those days are long gone.
The boot drives and all that other stuff is over.
Correct.
And I don't disagree that there needs to be that conversation about the various districts and stuff. But for this year, this is, again, like I said, this is what we're asking for for this year, to get through this, to have these other conversations, to move those discussions forward, but to meet the obligations and things that we have. Had we not been lucky enough to get a $400,000 appropriation from the state to finish that fire station, that would be additional debt service and everything that we would be coming to you and saying we need additional tax money for. So we're looking for grants always, we're always trying to do what we can to get our legislators involved, do firehouse subgrants, I mean, just anything and everything we can think of. But I don't disagree that we need to have that conversation in the future.
Why would you order a fire truck without knowing how you're going to pay for it?
Well, we had fund balance to appropriate from the fire department. However, we got a much better deal if we put a larger down payment down. It saved us over $65,000 to put a larger down payment down.
So you could pay for it out of fund balance, the whole truck?
The debt service would have allowed us to do the one truck, but not the two.
And our budget took additional hits that we could not control from dental and group life health insurance going up, take retirement requirements, 401K, lots of different variables in there that we don't control, as you all know. Some of them are substantial.
If this depends, our vote depends on your going forward with your budget, are you... We need to do this tonight, or you go on with your budget or...
We can't go tonight.
As I say, you guys have to...
We've got to have a public hearing this coming Tuesday night.
We're just on hold until you vote, I guess, next week.
Okay, okay, that's what I need to put on my note.
Managers, there another way to fund part of that or all of that without a tax increase? Instead of raising that to seven cents, they're asking for at one time, help and then have a conversation. Is there an alternative measure to help fund their needs without the tax increase?
Multiply that times 11.
No.
If you set a precedent.
No, I mean, it is, I mean...
I think with the structure we're in today, I mean, with having 11 districts and we have contracts with each district and the contracts contemplate the tax rate for each district to support their needs.
That's definitely going a step beyond what has historically been done. And I think that's something that the board needs to consider and take very seriously. If you do it that way, I would say other departments would be...
Knocking at the door.
And the tax rate we're asking for, there's already three departments in the county that have a tax rate of seven cents or higher, so it's not anything unheard of in this county.
The only question I really have is the feedback from the community. I mean, have you given adequate time for public hearings, for people to at least be vocal about this?
I balanced my budget based on the seven cents and it was presented to the council. That budget was published, just like y'all have to do. As the mayor said, we had public sessions for it and there was no objection. There was no one who showed up to speak on behalf of the budget. But it was advertised and published, yes, sir.
Just appreciate your consideration.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for watching, Chief.
Before we leave, can I just say one last...
Oh, yeah, we love hearing from you.
Nothing dirty, though.
You've been around for a while, like Mr. Paul there and Gary and so forth, can remember a time when the town and the county did not work together. You remember that? I think we've turned that corner now. I think we're on a good route to find ways that we can work together, that we can use the resources that the town has and the county can use the resources they have. We can work together to provide for the needs of all the people because we are elected to serve the citizens of Macon County, whether they live in town or out of town. We appreciate your time, we appreciate your concern courtesy and we hope you'll give us favorable consideration as you go through your budget process.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Hey, David.
Hey, Dave.
Good evening.
I got one last call. I forgot what I was talking about earlier. It's actually, we didn't just subsidize the $200,000 last year. We actually traded a piece of in-town property that was probably worth about $200,000 for the property to build the substation. So over the last like three years, the fire department's been subsidized about $800,000, $400,000 by the town taxpayers and $400,000 by the state. So we're already, we're already like pretty far behind, like this would help us get caught up. Thank you.
That answered a question.
Shoot, yeah, sorry.
Why would you build a substation within a mile of another fire service station?
That's an excellent question and from my understanding is, Corbin Cove area did not have fire service. They were a seven or a nine or something like that.
And all that sense.
And in this board, county commissioners, not in this incarnation, made a deal with the town because I think the town was better equipped than Echo Valley or Mountain Valley to cover the district. So the town, this is before my time too, the town made a promise to the county that we would build a substation that would cover Holly Springs, Corbin Cove, that area. Then the Chipswell where they are, the town traded a piece of property to get the piece of property behind the NPNL building, the old NPNL building, and we built the substation. That's how we got here, I don't know how many of us were involved in that process, but I think that's how we ended up with an entirely different district fire station within our district. And I think Mountain Valley may have a higher rate than ours, I don't know.
It is, but when you add, if that district there expanded and you brought in those revenues, then their rate could actually drop. Because they have the lowest budget, I think, of any fire station in our district in Macon County. And so if you expand theirs, then they bring in the values of all that property. And so therefore, their rate could probably decrease and have the same revenue. And then Franklin's district would decrease and less the burden on the Franklin Fire Service. And so I think it is a very, at this point in the game, I think it's a conversation that is going to have to be had.
No, I agree and I appreciate where your heart is, looking out for taxpayers. This is tough, I mean, spending other people's money is tough. I have objected to spending town taxpayer money twice to subsidize the district. So I get where you're at, it's tough. But yes, I welcome any and all conversations about it. Thank you all.
Thank you, David. Warren, do you have, by listening to, do you have anything that you would like to add or speak about? Or, I mean, you're the one, well, you're the one that are going to... Oh, yeah, please do.
So, yes, I will agree with Chief Warren, they provide valuable services. They are consistently one of the... They are consistently one of the most operationally organized departments that we have. We've had no operational efficiency. I do agree with that. I understand the dilemma that you're in. I understand the dilemma that they're in. The seven cents obviously goes above the revenue usual that we, we calculated last year, which puts them in the top four of the rates that we have. To answer the question about the substation, yes, he is correct. Mr. Goffever was correct. The reason that is there, Corbin Road, Rabbit Creek, some of that area was a protection class 10. Berry Cove up in there was, was a protection class 10. So when Franklin came and asked for an increase, which I believe would have been in 2017 or 18, I can't remember the exact year. We pretty much tied a stipulation to the increase that we will give you an increase this year, but we want a substation or some answer to bring those people in that area down to at least a protection class nine to buy insurance. We don't pick where they put the building. We don't anything do with that. So that's, that's how that building ended up there. They found property, it met the specs on the distance. That, that's why it's there. Mountain Valley's fire department, I'm one of the few people that was here when all that's come about. Basically, what happened was Franklin had an existing district and those folks on Laotogavista and out in that area had no protection. So they wanted to do a fire department. So that district was established for everything that was not in Franklin's area. And the only property that they could find was, was at that particular place right there. So that's why the building, there's no, there's no, nothing with the state of North Carolina that says that your building can't be in somebody else's district. So that, that's the reason that building was there. I have been a big proponent for years. Matter of fact, the fire study we did in 2017, I wrote a recommendation in there that we presented to the board that I thought it was asinine that one government had to come ask another government to set a tax rate or ask how to spend money or, and what, what our recommendation was back then was to take the service district, which is what the service fee is collected off of. That's established by you all. That's a general statute, 153A provision, that you establish that through a process. When we did that, we did it to cover municipal limits. We did everything at one time. When, when the fire fee that Jack talked about had to go away because it was deemed illegal, because it would, it would only tax folks up to a certain dollar figure. So it didn't matter if you had a $2 million house or a $200,000 house, when you capped out, you capped out, which is, which can do. What we probably should have done and what we could go back and do is cut out the municipal limits out of the service district area. The only issue is at that point, the money for the city limits for the fire protection would have to come out of the town's general fund, out of their tax rate. And then we would set, we, you as the board would set the rate for the area in the rural section. To me, I like that because they can set their rate for inside the city limits. The voters inside the city limits, they have to answer to them. You set the rate for the rural area, the voters out there, you have to answer to those folks. It makes it a little more complicated because you got two sets of money. But that would solve some of these issues. Now, the problem is you can't snap your fingers and do that. There's a statutory process whereby you all would have to request us to prepare a report, a resolution. You gotta, you gotta have the resolution presented, just like any other resolution. You have to notify the people within the area by mail. And then you have to have a public hearing. And if I'm not mistaken, the statute says it can only take effect on the beginning of a fiscal year. So that's out for now. The best you could do on that would be July of 2025. The other thing that you should consider, and we've talked about this, and this is in our fire study, we always get into these questions about rates. Well, neighbor rate is 10 cents, for example. Another fire department rate, 7 cents. And who's getting the best money or the service for the money? Or am I getting the same service for the money? Here is my thought that you all need to think about, and we put it in the fire study. I don't think we need one service fee rate for the entire county. But I think we could do three. I think we could set a rate for, we do a service district, for example, for Highlands and Scaly Mountain areas. We set a rate for that area. I think we do a service district for the Nantahoe area. We set a rate for that area. And I think we could do a service district area for the general Franklin proper area and you set a rate. And you collect X amount of dollars off that. And then you would have to do a formula, a funding formula. You would have to figure out some ways so that those folks could collect, you would grant X amount of dollars to this department, X amount of dollars to that department. But what happens is you cut out all of this discussion about the neighbors paying different tax rates. And I would say three because you have almost three distinct geographical and economic regions in Macon County. So you don't want to necessarily lump all those together and try and do a tax rate. Or you'll be back in the same conversations you have with Highlands. You know, if Highlands pays 30 cents and I live in Burrentown and I pay 30 cents, Highlands is probably paying a bigger chunk of our tax burden than the folks on, on Burrentown just because of the values there. But, but you could probably split that out into threes, develop the formula. Then maybe you could have the funds set aside that if you have that special appropriation for something. I'm against special appropriations. We've, we've been asked before, can, can we pull $100,000 out of the general fund or the fund balance to pay for something? And you will have that issue that Paul mentioned, that you'll have 10 more folks that'll come up next year and say, I want my, my stuff. So with all that being said, the, the system is changing. We have struggled. We, we have had departments that we've had, that we've ever thought we would have to deal with that have been on the cusp of being short on manpower or just struggling sometimes with no fault of their own to maintain. And I honestly don't know that that's going to get any better very quickly in the future. So I think the best thing you mentioned tonight was we need to start having those discussions and then we need to plan for the, the five year, the 10 years down the road. Because if we don't, we, we will be in a situation. Any questions?
I remember when we started in Burrentown, we got $25,000 since then. We build a building and ran a fire department down there. And it just, it morphs. And it really truly upsets me as a taxpaying citizen. I get my taxes billed every year. I'm being taxed on my trucks, cars. My God, they're taxed, I mean, they're insured to death. It's just, it's just, it's, it's, that tax base spreads. It evolves and it grows. And it's just, I don't, I don't want to pay for it.
And I'll tell you how the original service fee number came about. When we switched from the, the fire fee, Graham County and Macon County were the only two counties in North Carolina that had the fire fee, that had the cap, the cap to a certain dollar figure, no matter what your value was, which made it eventually illegal. It was deemed illegal, we had to change it. What we did is we took the dollar figures that they collected that year off that, and I think the max was 77.50. I think $77.50. So Walmart would pay $77.50 and the, the two-bedroom house could pay $77.50. But whatever that dollar figure was, if they collected $76,000 that year, we converted it to a person, we took their value, we converted it, we did a number, just like Lori did. We generated the service fee rate and that's where that number came from. So we, and it's just grown over the years from, from those figures. And I will tell them, we, we are struggling as far as EMS on equipment, as far as vehicles. We had one ordered August of last year. It is in production and we might get it by fall. I had money to spend. You, you all gave me money to spend last year. And believe it or not, I couldn't spend it. I couldn't get anybody to talk to me, to tell me that, even the vendor that we normally deal with, that has multiple contracts that we can access, they really couldn't tell me and didn't really want to talk to me about building another one, to put another one online. So I understand the, the issues we get with equipment. I will tell you that, that eventually after those discussions, somebody's going to have to make some more decisions. And unfortunately, it will all, this board or, or other folks.
It is sad that, I mean, I've heard Commissioner Bill many times talk about that's the best organization in Macon County. It was until we started pumping all this money into it and that money has divided it. And, and when you have firemen that are volunteers saying, oh, I'm not going because we have paid firefighters there, they can handle it. Gets a little disheartening because it was all my years. We worked so well together, fundraisers, fire calls, rescues, whatever the case may be. We worked really, really well together. And to see that friction is, is sad. I got one more question about, you were talking about the three districts. You mentioned Highlands and Scaly Mountain. How does that affect Scaly Mountain with them being partnered in with Raven County, Georgia?
Well, let me, let me rephrase when I say three districts. I don't necessarily mean three.
Three rates.
Three rates. Because you, you could take an area, let's say you do 7 cents for the Franklin proper area and just off the top of my head, you get $4 million. You still contract the fire districts to those individual departments, just like we do now, but you would, you would hand that money over to them in a different fashion. You, you would, instead of them collecting, having to set 11 cents for their area and 8 cents for theirs, you would divide it out equally and they would get a share of it. So it's not necessarily three districts, but three service fee areas. Scaly Mountain, Scaly Mountain is an anomaly in a lot of ways because they are a Georgia department and a North Carolina department. They have to maintain North Carolina standards for the stuff that's in the Scaly Mountain community. They have to maintain standards for the Georgia side on everything that's, that's down on the Raven County side. They do get some funding through Raven County. They, sometimes they'll buy equipment. I, I'm not exactly sure how that works. And then occasionally, and I don't, I don't get all the dollar figure, Sky Valley will contribute sometimes to them. In the eyes of North Carolina, they are, they are a North Carolina department. And then in Georgia, they're a Georgia department, even though it's the same people that serve both and they have the same name.
Yep.
And then in North Carolina, they're inspected by OSFM for their rating on the North Carolina side. Georgia doesn't recognize North Carolina's rating system. So the ISO Insurance Services Organization actually comes in and rates them for Sky Valley. So they go through multiple inspections for that. So that, that's an anomaly.
We've drug this out a lot, but I, I do want to say I like your angle. And I like how, you know, I draw an analogy in my mind to water. If you live in Franklin and you buy water, you, you don't, you don't have a choice. You have to have water. You don't have a choice on this tax rate. It's, it's deemed. And for your neighbor to pay for cheaper water and this neighbor to pay for more water, you know, it's, it's, it's a good point. I like where you're, I think there's merit to that conversation. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Warren.
I see some school people. I'm gonna pull that up, I'm sorry. Not sure what your expected piece there.
Gentlemen, ladies, thank you so much for this opportunity. I just, I've worked this week in light of this, the last Tuesday joint work session to try to meet with as many of you as I could. My name is Maggie Jennings. I am not here to represent the school board or the school system, but rather an organization called Arts for MCS, Macon County Schools. It was started in 2019 with, by an impassioned group of parents and community, uh, community members based on the services that we were or we're not getting involving the arts. And in this, um, and, and we, pre-pandemic, took our concerns to Dr. Baldwin and to our school administrators at the time. And we got an absolute, you know what? Yes, you're exactly right. We do need these services. And our offer to them was, let us help you. We were the ex, myself having a background in, in teaching music, our other fearless leaders at the time had a background in teaching art. First and foremost, we're parents. So we had, and of course, at the same time, we had a bunch of parents coming to us. So saying, hey, why aren't our kids receiving this? Can you shed any light on this? So we were kind of seen as the bridge between the school system and the community in a lot of sense. In that time period, we came up with a, a list of gaps in our education funding that our kids here in Macon County were receiving. We came up with, we did a cost analysis with the help of Dr. Baldwin and the school system. And we just generally said, okay, in order for us to bridge these gaps and bring our, we were missing programs at the middle school. Art, did not have art for about 11 years there. We are still without a course program there. We had a few go on. We came to commissioners in the budget season for, what was it? The spring of 2020, just, just shy of the pandemic. And we said, hey, here's seven and a half positions that we work with the school system to, we're asking for. Obviously, we are not the school system. We, we know that they report to you and your discussions with them have to be obviously separate. However, we had 100-ish people in the, the commissioner meeting on Tuesday night, March 10th of 2020. That following morning, we met with our superintendent on, we were in the office for a different matter. And he said, ladies, that was amazing. I have had some discussions. I think you will receive, we will receive several of those positions out of the seven and a half. He said, you won't receive all of them because that's not how this works. But I think we can do this. And then two days later, the county shut down for the pandemic. That left, obviously, a lot of people going, okay, this is not obviously the most important thing going on in our county now. So we, as a grassroots organization, we backed off and we said, okay, however, we can help, just let us know. Obviously, the pandemic money eser came about a little bit, a few months after that. And the school system said, you know what? We're not going to be able to obviously ask for these positions, but we know that this is still a really huge need. So they said, let's, let's use these, this, these funds for these positions. There are three of these positions that are eser funded. They are the two twin positions that are art at Iowa Valley Elementary School and music at South Macon. I call them twin positions because for scheduling purposes, they have to, they, they have to, they balance each other out. And then there is the art program at Macon Middle School. That is, all three of these positions are extremely important. We could go on and on and on and tell you all of the reasons that arts ed and collaborative, you know, collaborative arts programs affect our kids and they, the value that they bring to the table and the preventative reasons that they mean a lot to the, to, to our community. Obviously, with mental health, substance abuse, these are great ways that we kind of head them off at the pass and we provide something productive for them to do in a creative way that engages their mind differently than other things. However, that kind of, and we knew, we did, we did. We knew this coming in, that after three years, we were going to have to re-advocate for these positions. And we said, but you know what? We're going to have data at that point. We're going to have data at that point of not just the research. Here's what the research shows. Well, yeah, but here's what Macon County has shown and we do have that. And so today, Arts for MCS stands stronger than ever before. That not only are we, we, you know, we, we have so many parents now that are coming to us and they're in tears because they're going, this was the only thing that got my kid through third grade. My kid is failing and having all these mental, you know, health issues. Um, and this was the only thing. And we're hearing that from all over the place. Um, so the other, the other thing that we, um, we feel is necessary to point out uh, is the geographically isolated issue with us being Macon County having two of the only, the only three publicly funded K-12s in our state. And so that does put us in an awkward position, um, that as, obviously that requires more, not just capital, but it does require state allocations that other counties, uh, don't necessarily need. And, um, without going into the binders and papers and tons of different places that these allocations, um, come from within the state and they say, you've got to use this on this specific program. You could only use this in this system. It, it does, it becomes an extremely, a huge deck of cards just from my research and myself asking questions. Um, so on behalf of Arts for MCS, um, tonight, we are just asking you for three. We're asking you for three positions. I know the school system had a really huge ask on their recurring budget. Um, I am not here to speak on that. Um, I'm here to ask you for three. And those are the three that I mentioned, the, uh, music at South Macon, the, um, art at Iowa Valley and the art program at Macon Middle School. Those are already fun, are already staffed positions. They are already, um, positions that, um, we have been gearing momentum on. And, and this was the very first year we were able to have an all county, um, all county chorus that all of our schools participated in, they all sent students in there. Uh, Mr. Sherrill got to come to that. It was an amazing, we, we filled First Baptist Church with parents and community members. Um, standing ovation, the momentum of these students coming out of this experience, um, is indescribable. Um, so there are, at this point, I would venture to say well over a thousand, possibly thousands um, of individuals saying, please find these positions. Um, I'm, I'm sure, I don't know if this is being livestreamed tonight, but I'm sure that, uh, there's been plenty of these people looking for that livestream tonight. Um, and of course, um, interesting, uh, you know, that we had a lot of different people that normally come to these things last Tuesday and I know they're going to be following, uh, for this coming Tuesday. Um, so, um, I also want to point out, last thing, um, that at the, I, I noticed this. Can I ask questions? Um, at the end of the joint session last Tuesday night, uh, there was a letter that was mentioned to you. And I don't, I know there were people that were, I, it was nine o'clock and everybody was kind of done. But there was a letter that was mentioned that the school board had written to, um, the legislature and it was hoped that, um, perhaps maybe, uh, more communication could happen, I think, uh, with you guys to get, um, a consensus of, um, the fact that we are in a geographically isolated need. Um, there was a 3% that, uh, Mr. Rowland recommended in his budget that was going to cover, um, the, uh, positions that were locally funded to match the state funding. I believe that comes out to something like 331,000 was the recommended increase there, round and about. Um, so that letter, uh, I, I urge you to ask questions about that letter. And, um, essentially the, there is a house and, um, in the house and the North Carolina Senate, there is, uh, Mr. Courtman and Mr. Gillespie are attempting to get that 3% passed in short session, uh, this week. And, um, so, and I say this week, I guess by the end of short session, which I believe, if I'm not mistaken, is next week. Um, but my request at, on behalf of Arts for MCS would be that you would, um, consider making a provision in the budget to say that if the House and Senate passes these and we, our county is provided that 331,000, could we use that fund, those funds for, it would probably be up to four positions. Uh, fund what you can. And obviously I don't think as a board, you have the ability to say, these are the positions that would be funded. But, um, I believe we're kind of, I think we're all on the same page that those are, you know, uh, those are positions that I think most people agree. I, I know, I trust the school board that they would use them for that with, with the understanding of, of your conversation. Um, so, and, uh, obviously if you find other ways to fund that, um, either way, we just, we, we don't care how we fund it. We just, we urge you to consider that.
Ms. Jennings, can you give us those three, uh, art, where were those located then?
The three positions. Um, they are the art program at Iowa Valley Elementary, the music program at South Macon Elementary, and the art program at Macon Middle School.
Maggie, I want to apologize to you because I'm in the heart of our busy season at work and I did get the email back and did not get a chance to respond to you before, you know, tonight. So I would like to get together with you for sure because I need to know, I would like to know more about this.
I would love to share that with you.
Definitely, but I, I apologize.
I appreciate you, I appreciate all that you do for our county. And please know that I'm not here advocating for my job. Um, this was, I am the music teacher at South Macon, but I have also, um, accepted a position that is a backup position. So I am personally taken care of, but we do have two of those positions that, um, those people would lose their job.
Could you ask the lady right there, she'd ask me to say something and she, I think she may be with you.
I'm the art teacher for Iowa Valley. And, uh, yeah, I'm curious as to what's going to happen with my job. I have been teaching art for 28 years. I started out in Caldwell County Schools. And then, uh, we moved back home and to where my husband was from, I was in Duplin County Schools. And then three years ago, I took the position up here in Macon County because we bought a hu- a home that was originally a vacation home up here. And, um, I'm going to tell you honestly, in my 28 years, Iowa Valley has been the absolute best school I have ever worked at, ever. I've had kids two days a week for art. You saw some of my kids at the Carousel of Arts on April 9th. They were the boys and girls that talked about buildings that they made. Okay, that's just one of the many things that we've done. I'm just, I, I know there's a lot that has to be taken care of. I know money is, money and all that and budgets have to work. I get that completely. Um, I just want you to know, you have something great going on. I would really hate for those kids to lose back. I have gotten to know all 400 kids, actually, is that 436, I know them all. I used to be in schools where you saw them once a week for 30 minutes, that was it. You know how long it takes to learn names like that? Takes a while and then the longer personalities and stuff, you know, it takes a while. But having this was great for me, but it was even better for them. Because as Maggie said, we have numerous parents and kids that, oh, my favorite subject is art. You know, I can't wait, you know, to come. I have teachers tell me, you know, this kid's accent three days a week, but she comes the two days that she's got art. That's true. I mean, that's what gets a lot of kids through and it affects everything. Music and art affects everything. And the state realized that in 2021 when they made it a high school graduate requirement that they had to have art and, or the arts, I should say. And then, um, that they each school, you know, that they needed to give the, uh, equal opportunity to have it. And so that's kind of like, I know about that time, in 2021, that was right after they started, you know, petitioning for the other things and, and then S R funds came in and, you know, all those wonderful things. And I just hope that we'll move forward and not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And may I clarify what the purpose of those full-time positions are? Obviously, art sub, art at the middle school is self-explanatory. You either have it, have that program or you don't. Um, the two, uh, the art and music twin positions at the elementary schools allow there to be a full-time person at our two largest elementary schools in our, in our Franklin area. Um, if there are not, then those people, they're, the, the people that are left have to share those positions, putting them in this, the situation where they have to provide, um, 30 minutes a week um, to over a thousand, well, not over a thousand, almost a thousand students, um, on a weekly basis, uh, whether it be art or music. What that does though, is it pretty much terminates any kind of after-school programming or any kind of meaningful, relevant connections that they can bring in. No, there's not going to be any performances for, for the most part. There's not coming any after-school clubs, art club, chorus, um, no music theater, music theater club. Uh, so that terminates pretty much all of those after-school programs that really make that difference um, and give those kids those outlets, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jennings, both of you.
Thank you.
And also one thing I thought out is there was quite a number of years, how many, was it 11? I'm not exactly sure, that the middle school didn't have art, visual art?
It was 11 at the time that we start advocating in 2019.
So if that program goes, that would be a disaster. And, and in my opinion, that would be a disaster because if you know middle school students, they're trying to find themselves and that is one really great way to, really great.
It was a, a big blood to a huge gaping hole. Exactly.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got anything?
Anything, sir?
I'll just point that away, Harry.
I'm here if you guys have questions.
Come on up, just in case we have one.
Oh, hey, you won't, this is increased on tipping, right?
Not tipping, availability.
We do this on you every time. We gotta have a break.
Yeah.
Are we going on a break?
Five minutes recess.
Recession five minutes.
Alrighty then.
I took a candy bar earlier.
Might take like 45.
Babe, if you still want to have a face to face, like what you do is.
Well, yeah, soon as we get the agenda, we'll have one. I mean, I'll be with you anytime.
Let's have a little, little budget work session there, Ron.
Let's do it.
We have a session, 30?
I don't care, just make a motion, we'll do it. I'm ready, I'm game. Oh, come on now.
Hey, we'll stay till midnight, let's keep this thing out of the water. I'll hang out with you guys dirty place, let's go.
Ah, back in order.
Well, our man's not. Alright.
Yeah, I mean, in all honesty, I have nothing prepared. You now have time to look me over. I assume there might be some questions because of, uh, there is a, the increase requested in my budget. So I'm here to answer questions.
As I read your fee increase, uh, request.
Yes, sir.
And I think back at Commissioner Higdon's request to, uh, give raises to the convenience center employees. That raise is what's causing, that's what it says. I mean, we need, we need.
Part of it.
Part of it, right.
Portion.
I, I get it, but.
I mean, a guy making $7.50 an hour needs a raise.
Well, absolutely. But when you raise minimum wage to $15 an hour, the same thing happens. Everything else goes up. Well, you give them a raise, which they deserve a raise, I get it. But now we're talking about raising fees for other, yeah, so it goes hand in hand with, um, more money causes more, uh, costs more money.
Which calls creep.
Yeah, so anyways.
Are you a creep? You calling me a creep?
The creep's the government creep.
Oh, come on, bro. Chris, is it possible to get a list of past and present and future equipment for your operation? I would like a list of all your equipment. You know, we talked about 20,000 hours and all this.
Mm-hmm.
But I would like to have a list of all the equipment that the enterprise fund has purchased.
Now, a historic list or just what's on the property?
No, a historic list of what has been purchased, what has happened to that equipment and how many hours was on that equipment or whatever, um, at the time of disposal of that equipment. Um, is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't be able to absolutely guarantee I didn't miss something, but, uh, in all honesty, most, most everything we've ever bought is still out there somewhere.
Yeah.
Probably a couple of Lee Bears, which, we used to have three Lee Bears and two of them are, are ever-depleting carcasses trying to keep the third one going. Uh, that's, anyway, I, you know, I'll get, and I, I apologize for not, I did put that, I put that in my budget last year and, uh, I just didn't get it updated this year. But, uh, it'd be simple enough for me to, uh, update that and get that to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
By the time you meet Thursday, perhaps.
Oh. Yeah. Commissioner Higdon. We need to recess until Thursday and have another budget work session.
So why these convenience centers were set up was a rush job when it happened?
Yes, sir.
And it's never been corrected. It's maintained the same concept less than 20, 20 hours or less, employees to skate, little kids. It's only gotten there, well, a couple of them in their own town.
Mm-hmm, we've got probably three or four that are 15 years plus. Um, oh, I don't have that with me. I will say, you know, we started this, uh, we started the 750, which probably in 18 or 19 was our starting penny. Uh, it's now 11.
11.9351.
1193, um, proposing to go to 1253. Um, but I looked at, I looked at our retention rate and I mean, we employ a lot of elderly. So some of the retention rate, just leaving the workforce or leaving, period. Uh, but our retention rate has been 73% since we started bringing this up. So I think it, I think it has been a benefit in retaining employees. Um, the, the work that you have led and the previous boards have, uh, have allowed me to, to do for these folks, so.
Something's on the back of my support. You told me one time it'd be $12 a year for 50 years. I mean, $12 a month, no, what, pay 112?
Pay 108 now, pay $9 a month.
Yeah, $9.
This would go to $10 a month.
You told me, I asked you this question, you said you ever want to keep it at that? It's going to last for 50 years, they changed on both of those.
No, 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 no. You're, you're mixing two different stories. The landfill will last for 50 years, although we are eight years into that.
Yeah.
These guys need to be recognized for their value and I think I can't hire anybody $12 around.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate the job they do. Uh, I've said in front of many, every board that's ever sat here, uh, there is no other group of county employees that interact with every citizen on a weekly basis.
Yeah.
I was, I was 14 crazy, I was 14 tax crazy.
Well, luckily I have fees, I don't have taxes.
But I'm, uh, I know where the, I know exactly where this money's going. And I don't mind kicking in that dollar a month.
Yeah, they're great, um, they're great people out there. You can go by, they're just always seem happy-go-lucky and they'll have a nice conversation with you and, uh.
I mean, that's, I, historically, that's been one of the things, you know, they, they are, they are generally older. Actually, you know, not to, I don't want to get into any kind of situation here, but when, if, when we have hired younger ones, they didn't last for, I mean, they were terrible. Uh, but a lot of these folks, it is, it's just about. were terrible. But a lot of these folks, it is, it's just about, this is their reason to get out of the house and see people, and they absolutely look.
Yeah, and your signs look better. Oh, yeah, your signs stinky, that's, yes, sir, that's so much better.
They got your signs, everybody likes to make signs.
I was just bragging on to the convenience center workers that I watch them when I go in there, and there'll be an elderly person pull in there, and they'll go right over to that car, truck, or whatever, get that garbage out for them, and that service with a smile.
We've got some good.
If you're gonna take care of them, this year in your budget, I appreciate that. If we could ask that question, sometimes we don't know.
Right, right. Well, as I told y'all last week, two weeks, two weeks ago, I mean, I, I didn't, I didn't put bows and flowers, this is just exactly what it is. And I've never been so upset, I was telling somebody, I've never been so upset to ask for a fee increase, there's no shiny objects in it, it's just to square up, I mean, there's absolutely, there's nothing here, except, you know, making the, making the enterprise fund hold from year to year, so.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate what you do.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Rowland, Rowland, anything here we need to keep working with?
Well, this, this budget, Chris, out of twelve-dollar fee increase, this budget's fifty thousand less than last year, so if we talk to him for five minutes, this would take less than that, shouldn't it?
No. On my way out, I would say, my operating is actually less than it was last year.
Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Shields, that this board has, on whatever, whatever topic you'd like to discuss.
Mr. Sheriff, we're starting.
I can let three of us go along.
Go ahead, go ahead, if you want to start, yeah, because you may overlap mine.
We have to vote on something.
No, we can't vote on anything.
Consensus.
Consensus of the board.
We will make some consensus before we adjourn some items and things.
We need what?
Consensus on some items.
We'll be quick, three things, looking through this, I don't understand, I mean, this man is amazing. I guess the new one was a sixty-five thousand dollar budget, sixty-five million dollar annual budget. But anyway, there's some things in here, you're actually getting it sticky, and I'm not, every year we talk about the Cowie School, that thing was set up ten, twelve years ago to be self-sustaining within three years, and it's never happened. And this year is twenty thousand dollar fee. Do we see any financial records from them before we have a state fund? I mean, you know, we requested the fire departments, their fund balances or whatever they have, their bank reserves, do we do that case do, or do we just?
We do not, but I will say this, the electricity line item, that's eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. We actually, the county is billed for their electricity, and we pay it directly. And then that also covers, I think, I can't remember if they've got natural gas out there or propane, but those bills come directly to Macon County, and we pay those directly, you know, so we know what we're paying for. And then, anytime they do renovations, I make them get the renovations done first, then they have to provide me an invoice and a copy of the check, and then I reimburse them. But no, I don't see their actual financials, but we do have those controls in place that, again, we're paying their electric and gas bills directly, and any renovations they have to pay for and request reimbursement, and provide receipts and checks, checking copies.
And we are on a lease arrangement with them, so they lease it from them, and then they sublease the space to tenants.
Is it self-sustaining? It's like a lot of government.
Yeah, operationally, operationally, all we're, all we're doing right now, you know, at one time we paid a consultant.
Yes.
Contract fee down there for the longest time, about thirty-six thousand dollars a year. That went off about two or three years ago, and now all we do, again, it is a county-owned building that we lease to the cultural, the artisan heritage folks, and we, the only operational thing we pay is the electricity and natural gas for that. And then, like, capital improvements, I think some of the capital improvements that they've been making the last year and this year, ADA-related, accessibility, there again, going back to, with it being a county-owned building, with it being on our role, we try to keep it ADA access for it, to keep those improvements made down there.
Well, I guess the question is, I mean, I'm a little bit on the board, this might be our last budget, thankfully, but we're gonna get to play with the board just to keep funding.
You know, I actually spoke to, I actually had a small conversation, I don't want to throw them under the bus, but, I actually had a small conversation the other day about this school with some of the Cowie community. And I kind of pitched to them, if we were to grant them ownership of the school, and then pay a one- or two-time allocation, it puts them in a position where they have ownership of the building, and they can apply for grants and other income sources that would essentially, you know, deem them independent. And I never followed back up, but they seemed enthusiastic.
Well, who set up, I think it was three-year fund, I think six thousand dollars a year.
I think what's, what I've heard, and I'm happy to dive into this, is they don't own the building, so they can't pursue other funds and grants because it's a county-owned building. So if they were in a nonprofit, or they were in a different position, I think they could become sufficient. And I'm okay with that, I'm okay with giving the same allocation with title of the property. I mean, the community bought the building anyways, or paid for it, built it, you know, if that's, that's the best use for the building right now, which I think it probably is. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Secondly, is community funding pool. I never could, is there a line item related that's split?
It's in your special appropriations, that will be towards the back of your general fund expenditures.
Very last page of your fund expenditures.
And it will be on page...
Forty-two, very last page.
Forty-two, and right there, under, you'll see RES, or, excuse me, you'll see the...
Yeah, you're on the right line, RES special.
RES special, and that right there is the community funding pool.
So it's up from seventy-five to eighty thousand?
Seventy-five thousand, of that's community funding pool, the other five thousand is for the ladies in the Franklin Garden Club. In the past, that's been put in maintenance's budget, but that's not really fair to maintenance, because we really have never given maintenance additional funds. And if you remember, those ladies came before y'all, and they asked, we'd historically been allowing them twenty-five hundred dollars of expenditures, and again, that had been coming out of maintenance's budget, but we never actually put extra money in maintenance's budget. So this, I put it here this year, that five thousand for them, because, you know, they requested the increase to five thousand, and you, all of you guys seem to be in favor of that, for the work that they do, and the beauty that they provide downtown, so that's, that's why it's five thousand dollars more.
Well, my vote would be to, to do away with the community funding, the seventy-five thousand of all, I mean, that's just, I just, I can't, I can't see, if the chair can't make it without giving us assistance, then, so my vote would be, is there any flavor? I mean, I don't have to do this, my motion would be, or, I mean, I'm not supporting the community funding pool.
I think one of the reasons, I haven't served it on this place that I do now, being a commissioner for what, so many years, I think what we were trying to do is cut down the abundance of requests that was coming to us, that we put it into somebody else's betting court, somebody else's arena, so they'd have, because we had people, was for softball, it was, you had all these organizations out here that were coming to you requesting funds. And I think we kind of shift that to Patrick and that group there to monitor that, to keep from everybody coming here, doing the request, don't you remember that?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it was, the commissioner general, I mean, I never mind, they'd be coming in and requesting things, you weigh it out, you had input into it, but not all the town did away with theirs, I think Highlands did away with theirs, and here we are, we're still...
And, and I agree with you, I don't think it's right for us to collect tax money from the citizens of Macon County, and then decide who we're gonna give their money to.
Yeah, I just...
It's, I mean, if I have an organization that I wholeheartedly support, I'm gonna give them much more money than the county government's gonna give them. So, I agree, I think it ought to be left up to the citizens of Macon County to decide what nonprofit organizations in this county that they're going to support, and, and you're right. I know Town Highlands, they get away with their funding pool, and, and I believe Town Franklin did as well.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's small potatoes, all sixty-five million dollars, seven thousand dollars.
Do, is it public knowledge, who receives the funding?
Oh, yeah, the board approves it every year, they come, they'll, we have a...
They'll make their next choose.
So they're gonna, they're gonna present who gets the money?
And they do that every year, we have a board that's established, that, that will make the recommendations to the board for these organizations that have applied to them, this board has vetted them, and then you'll see the, the ones they're recommending, as well as the amount they requested, and then the amount that the community funding pool board will be recommending to y'all.
And last year, they had to advertise for applicants, didn't they? I mean, they were all lined up, seeking the assistance, but I mean, it's just, these are things, we start things and never abandon them, and never, certainly never eliminate any of them.
The question, Mr. Manager, about that now, the funds that they come in next week to seek is in the twenty-four budget.
Correct.
So, we have an option, when we adopt the twenty-five budget, to either fund it or not fund it, and, and that would be at the end of next budget cycle, yeah. But we have to do it now.
Like Laurie said, we still, throughout the year, we do charitable funding. It's like here at the Garden Club, that's five thousand dollars. And they deserve that, they deserve real more. Nana Halo, the Skater Mountains.
Skater Mountains got ten in the budget.
I mean, those are, those are the decisions towards chat, the five oh one C threes that this board made. So, is it, we're doing it both ways, you know. So, I think it's, if I'm, when I was on this board, I always appreciated the opportunity to look them in my eye, and listening and the justification, I just form them all, but anyway, that's a fault, there's not, there's not, the consensus on doing away with that, I'm good with that, and bringing that. And any other thing that I didn't really understand is under the senior services thing, is there senior servicing assessment for two hundred thousand dollars? What is, I've talked to nobody about that.
That was included, senior services has, that was identified on our, on our space needs analysis, and Commissioner Antoine had brought that up, and the two hundred thousand dollar amount, we paid for the space needs analysis in twenty eighteen, about a hundred and sixty thousand. And when you look at the building, you know, and look at the recommendations from the space needs analysis, along with, it did identify as a priority on that to look at renovations to the senior services building, and, you know, we have heard, the seniors had mentioned, and had came in here and mentioned that to us, as well as Commissioner Antoine, so we felt like that amount would give us, the amount needed to get in there and do a good thorough assessment of really what was needed, kind of, you know, before we, if the board wanted to head in that direction, to, to look at either the renovation or a new senior center or something of that sort. So that's why that has been included.
Hey, just that number seems excessive, because we did the whole space needs analysis for the whole county wide, one hundred and six thousand.
I think so.
Hundred and six thousand, two hundred thousand for one building. That just seems excessive to me, but whatever, I mean.
The space needs analysis that was donated, can we not use that?
We can, I mean, but it just is very, a very general, hey, this, you know, yes, this building could use some renovations to maximize the space, it wasn't identified as that high of a priority in the twenty eighteen space needs analysis, but nonetheless, it was identified. And, and basically, they just highlighted some things and said, you know, if you wanted to study making some renovations, or some possible improvements to this, then you could go further, and that's what this was, that's what this is attempting to do, is just to go that next step that was recommended there.
So, I did a couple walkthroughs with, that is an absolute awesome organization and what they do for the seniors of this county. It's, and so walking through there a couple times, my take out of this is, their biggest problem that they have is parking. They need additional parking, and...
Parking and also the stairs, like the way that's set up in there, like for them to keep going up and down their stairs, you know what I mean? It's not feasible for what they do in there, I mean, they're trying to make it work, you know, but they're susceptible for somebody to really hurt themselves in there.
Right. And like I said, they, I mean, it's just heartwarming for seeing the seniors over there with their activities and, and the things that they do working for the seniors.
Shields over there?
Well, he went over there and hung a flag or something, I don't know what he did over there.
You and I did.
But, so, yeah.
Shields may end up there.
What is it?
Go back there.
What do you need?
Well, let me just alert you to something, I think, is that this conversation, senior citizens, is just starting. I don't know where they are tonight, and they may be here coming next time, but there's, some of us had visitations at the bank on the hill, what's the name?
The old Macon Bank property.
Old Macon Bank property, for senior citizens. So there's a, there's people out there has a vision about what to do with the bank up there. Some of us have had walkthroughs with them, and me being one of them, and so I just wanted to say, when you start to talk about, I think I was hearing you say renovating, doing something over there, or adding, doing some cleanup or something, that you, there's another conversation out there you need to hear regarding to the senior citizens, and what they need that relates to the bank up there. And one thing is, you mentioned it, brother Doug, is the safety, trying to get in and out of the senior citizens. I went out there the other day, had to park in the church parking lot, was nicely asked to leave and find another place, but there's no other place to park. And, but this conversation is still gonna be out there, and I don't know when it's gonna be, I saw the two ladies here, oh, they were at the meeting a week ago, at the Fine Arts Center, and I'm just saying, you're dealing with a conversation here that's gonna have more to this.
When we looked at that, going to do that walkthrough over there, I don't think the vision was for that to be strictly for the senior center, no, I'm talking about like, being able to consolidate several different departments for use of that building, and at the same time, like, if that were to happen, like, say that that building would be purchased, you know, first of all, selling the existing building, and applying funds towards, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Getting that building, but also consolidating some departments where you can put more in that, in that large building, because it's a really large building.
Oh, beautiful building.
I can see how they can help for them, but it's definitely not a building that's suitable just for senior services. It can benefit like the county in a way, better way than, you know what I mean? So we can add, there's a lot of different departments, I think, that can fit in there, just, it'd be a matter of just sitting around and figure out, like, what can you put in there?
Yeah, and what he's saying is, is correct there. If you look at, let's just say you took that bank, and you put several organizations or other departments in there, then you're freeing up the cost of stuff that you're, you've got in these other buildings by repurposing that building to occupy, I think... in these other buildings by repurposing that building to occupy, I think I heard seven there at one time, um, then you wouldn't have the expense on the, on certain buildings. I've, I've got anything, I hadn't got to talk with Mr. Rob about it.
I'd encourage you guys to dust off the capital improvement plan that we had done. Senior services ranked last.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you know, we, we paid for space needs capital improvement plan. If we just completely ignore that and start jumbling around in accordance to rankings, it's, it's a, it's a waste of money. Capital improvement plan, the justice center, the sheriff's jail, those are high rankings on the capital improvement plan.
And I think they will agree with you a hundred percent, but they're also, they're saying now.
You can't give them that.
We can look at this building, that opportunity walkthrough, you could put other departments in there that would free you up or you wouldn't have a cost for those buildings. Let's just say you put social security up there or somewhere like that or.
Social security, I'm sorry.
But if something's cost enough money, the county's money, uh, for facilities, so.
DSS?
Yeah.
Talking about DSS was one of the departments we talked about.
Yeah. So I'm just telling you, it's out there. It's got, it's got some breadth to it and, uh, you, you probably approached about having a conversation with it.
The question is, with this two hundred thousand in that study, when would Macon County be financially ready to move forward with what this study, um, twenty thirty-four?
Well, that's just the thing. I mean, that, that's just the thing is the, um, you know, I think the study gives you the opportunity, if this is something the board wants to do, uh, to really, to closely evaluate that and maybe some other, uh, things such as this board has mentioned, um, tonight to look into some of those things and, and to give us at least a picture of, of, and there again, I don't know if this type of study, um, is even gonna get down into numbers that, that are going to, I, I don't know how, how in-depth it will be in terms of the numbers of some of these other things, but you, you have a chance to target this fund. And there again, it might be, we might get a proposal back for fifty thousand dollars to do it. We just wanted to be sure that we included enough money to do the assessment of the senior center and see what that needed. Like you said, you know, if the steps are the problem and, and the study comes back, hey, you fix these steps and, and fix ingress and egress, now you've taken a ten million dollar conversation and you've made it a, a five hundred thousand dollar conversation. So at the end of the day, that two hundred thousand dollars was worth it. It, it, you know, but, but other, in the, in the absence of that, at least it will tell you what you're dealing with, uh, moving forward or what kind of price or, or costs that you're actually looking at and what kind of deficiencies that, that you're actually looking at having to fix in that building instead of just a, the hundred and fifty thousand foot view that was provided by the space needs analysis.
Every damn building new.
And that's what I'm telling you at the bank. If you go up on the hill, look at that, uh, their view is to be a part of that bank up there and also there's other groups that be part of it.
And John, you bring up a good point, um, you bring up a good point about the, the twenty, we would be able to do it twenty thirty-four. I think that is a good point because I think, you know, with this, I think that two hundred thousand is meant to speak somewhat toward the, um, the level of detail and the level of planning that we need to be going into when we're talking about taking on other, or potentially taking on other significant capital expenditures outside of those that we already are feet are taped to the bike on and, and which is a lot, uh, you know, that we discussed last week, that hundred and fifty million dollars. So I think moving forward, like every, every major capital project, every, every time that we talk about these things, we have to keep that in mind, that, that the future under the current revenue parameters at our current tax rate, as far as significant capital expenditures go, the future is going to be very oriented towards planning and, and very oriented towards, you know, starting to build back reserves again. We're, we're, we're gonna be in a build back period there for a while. And so, um, as much of this planning as we can do that, that really identifies where the needs are and where they're not, you know, the, I think the better off we're gonna be, especially like you mentioned, with these significant, significant capital projects that we're, we're in deep on right now.
I don't wanna pick, I'm just stating a fact right here, but if it's twenty twenty-four and you're talking twenty thirty-four, before we could fund this, it's gonna be ten years old. Space needs analysis is.
Right.
Before we could actually do something with it, well then, is it relevant at that time?
Right. And there again, I.
My point. You know what I mean? Like if we're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars on a piece of documentation, we're gonna use ten years from now, it's ten years old.
Right. And again, that, again, that number is, it might not be two hundred. It might, but if they could, if you could get somebody to, to come in there and say, hey, um, here's your deficiencies, you've got some, some handicap issues here, you can fix it with a lift, you know, you can make, here's some things you could potentially do in the parking lot to improve that.
And that wasn't already done?
No, the, the space needs analysis was a very high level study that dealt with each individual county building.
Box scooters.
Man, just going, just thinking outside the box, just thinking something like Jeff Weller or somebody. I mean, if we contacted with somebody like him, surely God, it's not two, two hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And he's qualified to do something like that, isn't he?
Sure.
And that's what they're really asking for.
Right. Just going, there again, going back to, um, just having to have a number to put there, um, to be able to move forward and understanding the, the last comparable we had was that space needs analysis in twenty eighteen.
But I think at this time, what Chairman Shields is talking about is there's some outside conversations going on about this. I think we need to let some of that stuff play out because, I mean, there's no need in having a study done on something that could potentially be something that's obsolete for the senior service.
The trouble with the study, you hire, just like my criticism of this, what's going on in the school system now, you hire architectural firms to bring them in here and you turn them loose and then they just give them blank shit going on outside, outside classrooms. We have ADA parking on a track that we never even request parking for. I mean, it's expansive, but the purpose of government is to expand and, uh, provide a service, but in the process to expand and provide more services. Everybody wants a new building, everybody wants the best. And those are not always necessarily, those are not necessary to provide, provide the services that are required. So guys, just be careful with how all this new, new this, new that, new that, it's, we're taking on a big debt with this school thing and, uh, y'all will be faced with some very serious challenges, capital challenges.
Well, every time we turn around, there's somebody just like with Dr. Thomas coming in with this needs here. I mean, and they're just continuously everywhere you look, there's looming, that's looming around the corners.
Every, ever one is his most important issue.
That's right.
Mine's more important than Joe's.
So.
You gotta wait through it.
We have to be extremely careful, um.
Say no occasionally.
Yeah. Um, so anyways, that's.
Is that it?
Oh, no. You know better.
Let's get it on, boys.
Wait, yeah, I'm waiting on you.
I'm done, I'm done.
You took up two hours.
Y'all want to talk to yourself, we're leaving.
We did it like last year, let's get bust, bust a highway.
Um, transportation, I, I went through these and I'll just, um, salaries and benefits increased by seventy-six thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars, which is eight and a half percent increase. Um, that was, um, grant funded, is that correct?
Out of your transit, uh, your, your transit total budget's gonna be one and a half million in fiscal year twenty-five. And of that one and a half million dollar total budget, only about three hundred and four thousand dollars is representative of county funding. So the rest of that budget, the one point two million is grant funded.
Okay. Um, the only other thing, I am the liaison to, uh, the transit, uh, Macon County Transit. And, um, with the business community that's upset about the hiker business, in my mind, I think that in the best interest of the county, the taxpayers and the business community, that should go to a private sector. If we're gonna be in the hiker business, let, let the private, um, um, because we're getting businesses that are coming in here fighting each other because they're stating that this business is getting special treatment by transit and, um, and it, it just, and we were told that just like Chick-fil-A over there, well, there's no shelter, there's no drop-off point. Nate, there's not one right here on the corner of the courthouse square.
Can I, can I interject? So I had a conversation with Darlene about three weeks ago. I don't know if anybody else is aware, I wasn't. It was only a three-month period out of the year that they've done for a couple of years now. And she told me after the past couple of years, they are very likely that they would not, you know, comply again next year and, and future. So I feel like consensus of this board to say just that.
That's what I was told too.
So I feel like that, that problem's solved.
That problem is solved.
It's three months, it's three months out of the year, so it's not a twelve-month problem. And then she said, there's just been so much.
Right.
Hassle. And, and then there's people with appointment times that get shuffled and so they, she said, most likely this would not continue on in the future. So I think that's.
Yeah. Because I think it needs, transit needs to be used to help our folks out here that don't have transportation. It needs a way to the doctor or the grocery store, whatever, what, in my mind, that's what it's intended for, not, and, and just listening to these business people and, uh, it, it's just gonna, it's just gonna get more ugly and you're trying to cover up the reason why it's not. Well, you look out here, there's no shelter out here and that's the drop-off point. So, uh, that's excellent. That's, uh, I think.
I talked with a couple of them the other day to me and they're under assumption that it's a dead thing for next year.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, if these businesses want to provide a, a service to go pick up hikers, then let them go pick up hikers. I mean, I, I appreciate the hikers being here.
Short dollar of economics.
Yep. Um, so, okay, um, tax office. We have a hundred and seventy-six thousand one hundred sixty-one dollar upgrade in imagery, imagery. And my question to this is how does this help the taxpayers? I read, I read in there that it's going to help the tax office the same way as that state-of-the-art programming that was purchased a few years back. It helps them with the, um, with not having boots on the ground, but we still have the same boots in the office.
Right. And I think more of that can be looked at also as cost avoidance because as you continue, you know, the development we've seen in Macon County has been tremendous. And when you start talking about from the period of February through June, when you're talking about our tax base grew by two hundred million dollars during that time, that tells you the rate that this development is occurring. And with that being said, this imagery, it's a continuation, it's every two years. We started with pictometry back in, I think, twenty eighteen. And this pictometry, what it does is every two years, they will do a new aerial flight of the county. And essentially what this upgrade is, is, I think it's about a forty thousand dollar upgrade from what our flight would have been otherwise. And all it's doing is it's making the imagery, it's taking it down from a six-inch imagery to a four, to a three-inch imagery, which, um, improves the level of detail that, that can be used from these structures. They're flying and not like a, not like your imagery you see on, on, uh, on your GIS site. These are actually three D orthogonal images that can go all the way around, that you can get accurate measurements, um, from the tax office standpoint without these individuals having to, uh, to leave to check for an addition or to be out of the office, go check for an addition, new construction, come back, put it in. So it's more of a cost avoidance thing and I think it speaks to the value of this that we've been able, especially since in twenty eighteen, when we started with pictometry, all the, the avoidance that we've been able to, the cost avoidance through additional personnel that we've been able to keep out of the office by having this technology. And as we continue improving on it, that's, and as we continue to grow, it's, we're just gonna keep receiving more and more of a benefit off of that. So I know this is, it's a big chunk this year, but it will go down next year because we fly on an every-two-year basis. And also we added, uh, last year to go along with it, it's called Change Finder. And Change Finder is an accompanying program that is added to the pictometry that picks up any new additions to structures since the previous flight. So if there's, uh, a structure's been added on that somebody hadn't pulled a building permit for, um, that's picked up and identified by that Change Finder. And, and there's thousands and thousands of dollars that we've picked up just off that alone, just off that Change Finder that we would have otherwise never even known about had it not been for that technology and, and our ability to use it.
Well, I'll just tell you, Mr. Manager, as a diehard conservative person, the government does everything they possibly can to enter our properties, your properties and everybody else's property without entering that property. And, and that's what this right here, this is just another way for the government to, um, watch every move you make, um, and get every nickel and every penny out of every citizen of this country. And this is not, um, I mean, I have a problem with all that just for the simple fact that I'm a conservative person, always have been, and I believe in less government or limited government. And, um, and so these things, it's an, in, in my mind, it's an invasion of your property without entering your property. And that's, um, that's just, um, my take on all these. I mean, that, that's no different than, and I know I'm getting off key here, but it's no different than the internet service. Um, the internet service, that's why in my mind, the government is pushing broadband in every household in America. It's just for the simple fact, you've got smart TVs, you've got computers, you've got cell phones, you've got Alexa, you've got all this. I got a satellite phone in my truck. I was riding down the road one day and all of a sudden this lady starts talking to me. I was, what the heck? This lady just comes right in on my satellite phone and, and so it, it's, it's an invasion of, um, property owners and, and everything in, in my mind, but I appreciate your explanation to that.
Just remember, AIs are coming. They're here.
Um.
What is it?
So.
I'm trying to explain that.
Okay. So Commissioner Higdon talked about the, the Cowie School, um, and the community funding pool.
Automation.
Um, health and human services, um, I know you have requested, um, in the budget proposal, two new hires for, um, a hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars. Um, I would recommend not budgeting that hundred seventy-one thousand. I read on further where your, your recommendation is not to advertise those two positions until January twenty-five. Well, I would recommend that we do not, um, include that in the budget and we gave them twenty thousand dollars the first time that I know of that they got rid of the backlog for twenty thousand dollars. I think we should monitor that and, and make sure that we don't get behind. If we get behind again, then we can, we can talk about, um, those positions at that time because if we can, if we can pump in twenty thousand dollars and get rid of this backlog that has been haunting Commissioner Higdon, um, in how long? A month?
Those boys busted your.
They did. They did. And they did a fantastic job.
And in the process, the most experienced employee in environmental health was dismissed. So it's over, there's no way. This backlog's coming back, it's coming back.
Was dismissed.
Dismissed.
We can't talk about personnel.
Okay. Um, so that's just, um, um, and, well, I can't talk about this next section then because it's personnel. Um, uh, the senior center assessment, uh, we've talked about that. Recreation. How did, how did recreation eliminate two full-time positions?
Uh, through contracts, uh. Through contracts, largely through contract labor with the, we've contracted out now multiple sites. We had a supervisor retire in Nantahala that we didn't fill. And that is, we actually tramped, once that position was vacant, it then became a maintenance position that was split with emergency management to do all the emergency management stuff that needed to be done over there, as well as all of our maintenance stuff at various sites over there, aside from just the rec park. So it worked out well there. And then I think we had a vacant maintenance worker position that was resolved, that was dissolved, that we did not fill.
Okay, so actually there was one that was eliminated and one that was never hired.
Two eliminated from the recreation budget over the past two years.
Yeah, but one was actually a person that left and one we never filled.
Right, right. But the two positions are now not on the books.
Okay.
Right.
You have.
Position, take care of the new library.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, so now that you, you've mentioned that, how and who chose the subcontractor or subcontractors for mowing these facilities?
They were all advertised in Franklin Press.
Do you have the dates on the advertising?
We can get them.
Not good, of course.
Okay. I would like to have.
We're good, but we're not that good.
Ah, yeah. Because, and the contract, I mean, I, I, I'm in this business, so when I talk to, you know, we go to school together and everything else. And, and maybe it was something that these companies missed in the paper or whatever. But who decided the scope of work to be subcontracted? And who decide, who decided how much the pay was going to be for these? And, and I will just tell you that the town of Highlands subcontract every bit of their maintenance as far as landscaping and mowing. And I have one of those contracts, I've had it for 30, well, 36, 35, 36 years, minus three years. And I do that property for half of what it would cost the town of Highlands to hire staff to maintain that one property. So through that, if it's done correctly.
You know, you have, we have people that are committed to that. That's what those folks do. There, there's certain, there, there's a balance there, and that's the direction we're working towards, as we have shown here in Rex, a good example. You know, we looked at doing the same thing, you know, through attrition as employees retire like with things such as custodial. But the thing of it is, is you can't find a custodial service that, that, that comes in anywhere west of Asheville. You know, we looked at that a couple of years ago, things like that. So we're always looking at things like that. And we've really found a way, and the rec budget here is a great example, through the contracting out some of our mowing, and that was sitting down with the rec department. We had had a board, a previous board a couple of years ago ask us to look into that. We went down that road, started, I think actually Commissioner Young was instrumental when we started looking into that and, and wanted just what you're saying, you know, it's a great way to reduce costs. So we started doing that and identified the areas that were, that we felt like could get the most bang for our buck with the contract labor with the recreation director. We developed that scope of work, we put it out to bid, according to North Carolina general statutes, like we do everything, we advertised it in Franklin Press. And, and we received multiple bids on, on each time that we've released a portion of this. So as we head that direction, you know, and, and we continue to look for every way to decrease costs, that, that is, the, the contract mowing has been, as you pointed out, a very good bang for our buck, and, and we hope to continue going that route.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and not only that, is if you have an employee, we've had this discussion before, if you have an employee that works for the government, it's extremely hard to terminate that person. And if you have a company that is hired to maintain the old Parker Meadows Park out there, and this scope of work is right here and they fail to do so, you have a conversation with them. They either step up to the plate and do their job, or you terminate them and you go on about your business. And then if you have an employee that mows the grass, grass only grows eight months, nine months out of the year, so what do you do with the employee the next three months? And if you have a subcontractor, you don't have to worry about that. You don't have to provide benefits and all that other stuff. So that's, I think that conversation should be in the future about looking at all these properties and just see what, see how, if we can improve the qual, the, and I'm not talking about anything that these guys are doing. All I'm saying is, is when you have a year-round employee and you have to, they have to perform 12 months, and the grass is only growing nine months, then there's three months downtime. So, all right, so, I mean, y'all pipe in? I mean, I just got stuff. One thing that I will like to say though, and I was gonna say it next week, but I'm gonna say it, congratulations to all the seniors, class of 2024. And the CTE program, I went out to that ceremony the other day. Mr. Shields was up there on the stage, all decked out in his suit and, and hugging with, with a few of them and all that stuff. But anyways, it was awesome to see those kids. I mean, one of them is already a pilot. Two years.
Already got his license.
Two years in a three-year program. Paramedics or EMTs already got a job with the county. That is a great feeder program. And, and that, and I'm just gonna single out this one kid that got his, that went through aviation. That kid has a fantastic future ahead of him with lots of money.
And you had young people who got that CTE piece diploma before he can graduate.
Yeah. Oh, yeah? And so, and there was a great field, I mean firefighters and everything else out there that was, it was.
You remember that, and you and I talked about this a little bit, that piece is part of the new high school to bring in the focus, your CTE program, bringing this new high school. We've talked about it.
Yeah.
Those are the knowledge we need.
Well, Mr. Manager, do you know anything about the term of Secure Act? Have you ever heard that term?
Not sure.
It's, and I'm not sure. Mr. Counsel, have you heard the term Secure Act in the federal government, that bill or a law that they're trying to pass that? And, and I'm just getting bits and pieces of that, I haven't really dove into this. It's supposed to be in protection of your part-time employees that are entitled to some type of retirement benefits that is supposed to be enacted. Tammy, do you know anything about?
No, really.
Okay. That was just something that, that I saw and I thought I better.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into that for sure.
But you mentioned that, that's also one of the conversations we have, Paul's had it too, when we go by our dumpsters and things like that, you'll run into some people who've been down there a long time, and they want to be compensated as a part-time person. And we've had this discussion, I know that Mr. Reddiner's had this discussion and advised us on it about people who want that, there's a, there's more to, well, I think there's a ball, a law now, so that secure thing may be trying to circumvent that, a new law.
Right, okay. Well, I, I wasn't sure, I just thought I'd ask while I, okay. So Macon County Schools will get how much increase in your proposed budget?
Uh, yes, sir. It will be an increase in operational funding of 335,405. And there's also, Commissioner Sherrill, we proposed an increase in capital, annual capital outlay of 100.
100, okay.
So total increase in funding, increase in local funding to the Macon County school system will increase by 435,405 in the coming fiscal year. That is the second consecutive year, as you'll recall, in the prior fiscal year, we increased, that was the first increase we had had to local education funding in the last five years. And this board increased the funding at, at that time by 880,638. So, and, and that was again in operational funding. So over the past two years, this board has increased operational funding to the Macon County school system by about 1.2 million dollars.
And you know, we're looking at that quarter-six, quarter, quarter-six sales-type thing we're looking at this year, that's gonna help on the operational piece. Any of the voters.
Did any of you guys attend the graduation ceremony for Franklin High School? Anybody?
Didn't have to graduate.
Yeah. Well, I attended, I got my times mixed up. I thought it started at six and started at seven, so I get there about 10 after six because I'm just gonna slip in there. And so parking was a disaster. I mean, that whole campus was completely jammed with vehicles. Every parking lot surrounding the Franklin High School campus was jammed, parked down the street, and the other parking lots, and business parking lots, it was all full. That's worthy of being concerned about that campus and that property. Because it was, it was.
Dangerous.
Well, I mean, there was, nowhere to park.
Mr. Reed, did you get to go to Western and graduate?
Sir.
That was the answer, is go to Western. Derek, did you go to Western?
Yeah.
We all went to Western. No handicap problem or anything when we went to Western. You could have all, you could bring mom and daddy and all the extended families, come to Western. And, and an extended family that I had, I had 16 people. When you bring grandma and grandpa and all this there, and I don't know how, somebody's praying good, you will get a storm here sometime, and they're not prepared. But I've talked to them, but Western Carolina did a wonderful job, they just bring everybody there, had plenty of parking and everything. But that's.
Well, I didn't realize they brought the graduation back, and I asked when that happened, what's a couple of years ago? And, I mean, it brought back memories. I mean, many, many, many years ago, I was in that position.
You went to Western too.
I didn't graduate.
You.
But.
I made sure you did.
But if that's any, if that's any indication, I hope, you know, we asked a long time ago about the parking situation at Franklin High School campus, and that part of the study had not been completed as far as parking with the new school.
Does that mean you support school now?
I've always supported school.
There we go.
For school, that's not for $200,000.
On that line, and this has been asked by many people, why does the county taxpayers pay school teachers?
That's out of my business. Why does the county?
Why does the county taxpayers pay 30 school teachers?
It doesn't provide enough funding.
Okay.
You're a better one.
But is that, is that?
Let's bring the school board back. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Put them back in the same room?
Yeah. Because, okay, so, all right, let's go into that a little bit deeper. The county pays school teachers. I'm not against the teachers. I mean, I get beat up every time we talk about this stuff. We have 30, according to the budget book. Why is it that the state funding and requirements are not sufficient? It's a state organization. And they're responsible, according to everything that I've ever heard and known and everything else, Macon County taxpayers are on the books, are on the hook for brick and mortar. So in that, you have, are those teachers, are they county employees or state employees?
No.
What?
They're not county employees.
Okay. Okay, so the school teachers that are paid by the county tax dollars are not county employees?
No, and we don't want them to be.
Okay, so now that answers the next part of the question is, is you, your budget request for county employees' pay increase was different than the school employees at 3%? So that answers that question as to that's why they're gonna get 3%?
Well, they got 3% because it was part of a biennial budget passed by the state that was 3% last year and 3% this year. And that's in addition to any step increases that the state would give or longevity.
Yeah, okay.
It ain't right, it ain't right, but.
And, and you know, that conversation is not, or the one that, that you just said, is not a conversation that's just happening in 10 county boardrooms across the state.
Right.
It's happening in 100.
Well, when you see the state say that they have a billion dollars in surplus.
Right.
And it's, and I'm thankful for what our state leaders have brought back to Western North Carolina. But when you got a billion dollars and you're on the backs for grandma and grandpa over here to pay school teachers that the state should be funding when we gotta build a 138 million dollar school.
That's interesting.
Yeah, yeah. So anyways, that answers.
Another thing you gotta keep in your mind on this thing, there's three K-12 schools in North Carolina.
Yes.
We have two of them.
Yes.
And that really throws things out of balance because those kids got to have a teacher, and they may not have an attitude in a classroom, but they still got to have teachers.
Would, I have some questions for the Sheriff's Department.
About the drug?
There he is.
Well, I don't know, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and, and tell you my, my breakdown of the Sheriff's Department. Says we have vacancies of two deputies, one detention officer, one code enforcement official. What does the code enforcement official do? Is this a new position?
That's not in the, that's not in the Sheriff's, that's in the public.
That's a public section in general.
Public, okay.
Building inspections is included in the public section function.
Okay, all right.
We got three deputy positions open now, though.
There was one.
A budget time, this was like, this is a couple of.
Okay.
This is ever revolving.
The budget for courthouse security has more than doubled.
The courthouse security budget is all the, it's part, it's part of my budget, it's all admin, evidence, courthouse security, training, recruitment, retention, you know, it's essentially an admin budget, I, we thought it was supposed to be changed last year, I don't know why it's still named courthouse security.
Yeah, it was, when the new sheriff took office, the courthouse security budget, he put a bunch, he added a bunch, took a bunch more from other departments that were previously in other areas of the budget, and put them in the courthouse security budget. Overall, the sheriff's budget, operationally, is flat with what it was last year, aside from the step and cost of living adjustment increases.
Yeah, and if you, in the budget book, if you look at courthouse security on page eleven, it only increases four thousand dollars between twenty-four to twenty-five, if you're looking at the twenty-three actuals...
I just saw the two million dollars, um...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the reason, you have to kind of ignore this, because with the new sheriff, the old sheriff, they had three orgs within their budget, the new sheriff came in and said, I wanted things split differently, so we set up three additional orgs, they have six orgs, so what used to be courthouse security at about eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, now is professional services and regulations or something like that.
Yeah, like my budget covers all our gasoline expenses, our vehicle maintenance, because I do the fleet management, so everything like that, you know, is put into my budget. Like, we added sixty-six thousand dollars for, Derek talked about it here a while back, whenever we first introduced the budget for a cloud-based server for our body cams, all that's out of mine, you know, anything that incorporates, the department as a whole is paid out of that budget, so it really should be called courthouse security, you know, because we service, I pay for all the printers, you know, the Toshiba printers out of mine, I pay for the paper supplies for those, I pay for office supplies, you know, for the department, so it's kind of a catch-all, you know, for, it's the admin, you know, recruitment, training, all that, but it's a catch-all for, you know, we supply the other, the other orgs, you know, there's six orgs with the things that they need, so, you know, if it doesn't fit within a specific one, like if it's not just for patrol, or just for detention, or just for SROs, then it's, it's put into that budget, so it was part of that, and like I said, it should be named, you know, like administration and support services, but, you know, it's still, for some reason, named courthouse security.
Okay, so, I guess my biggest question is, is what do we pay for those metal detectors operations out there in the courthouse?
Well, the detectors were bought under the last administration, I don't know what they cost us at that time, you know, I couldn't answer that, but I, we man four employees, I have two sworn employees, two non-sworn employees, right now, I'm having to use some of our civil process officers and other courthouse security, and along with a part-timer, because at one of our, my sworn deputies that left to Jackson County to make twenty thousand dollars more a year, we lost another jailer the other day to pay more money, and, you know, we're, we're one of the lowest-paid ones, but essentially, it costs us four employees a, a year.
Okay, so those two deputies that are sworn officers, would they not be better used for your two vacancies, and take those metal detectors and put them on the fourth floor of the courthouse, and stop manning everybody that comes in and out of this courthouse to go to the bathroom, go to the mapping department, or, or go to, uh, whatever?
I mean, ultimately, that would be a board's discretion on how you want to operate the courthouse.
That's resident superior court judge.
There's no, there's no court order there, there's no court order, we've, we've researched it, and, and actually, all the paperwork from the state says we get it. It's easier to put those metal detectors in the main entrances to the courthouse, because that's the entrance, you can catch everybody coming in, but ideally, they should be up there, outside the elevator, and whenever somebody comes in from the stairs or the elevators, they go through those metal detectors, those are for protection of the courtrooms. That, in my mind, is unconstitutional, when you come up to that door out there and it says, "Upon entering this facility, you're subjecting yourself to search and seizure." No, I'm not, and I had a conversation with the sheriff about this, and he said, John, we're not gonna mess with people, you may not, but you could. So, in my mind, those, that's courthouse security, that's why I've been talking about a self, or freestanding justice center, where you could move the DA's office out, you could move the, the clerk's office, you could move the courtrooms, you could move all this stuff, and then it leads to the next part, and, and I'm gonna bounce around here again. We just had a special election for a runoff in the primary, the Board of Elections come in to us wanting funding of fifty thousand dollars to handle this special election, which was probably one percent of the voters cast a vote in that. Well, wait a minute, if you, if we had this election in our office, we wouldn't need these additional funds. We don't have to work the hours that the state tells us on an off-site facility, we could work our normal hours and hold that election right here, and save the taxpayers a lot of money, and if that money was spent to move that office, well, well, why can't you hold it in your office, it's not ADA compliant, okay? Okay, well, what do we do to, to improve that office to be ADA compliant? You can't, it's downstairs. So if we take those detectors out there and put them upstairs where they belong, and let people come in and do their county business, you can take your two staff members that are sworn officers, and you just fill these two positions for your deputies. Now, you're gonna still have courthouse security, because you've still gotta operate security for the court system, but I don't know how many of everyone that's sitting in here has looked out here, and you're missing a lot of people that were coming to these meetings, and they're not coming to these meetings because of those metal detectors. Bob Scott, whether you like him, don't like him, or whatever, he came in here, he's carried a camera tool in his pocket for forty years, and he was not allowed to come through those scanners because of that tool that he uses to work on his camera. There ain't nothing in the world that man could have done with that little bitty, little bitty screwdriver that he works on his camera, but he had to go back to his car and drop that tool off and come back in, he hasn't been back since. There are a lot of people that are missing out here that refuse to come to these commission meetings, that has a lot to say. And I think that's a waste of taxpayers' money, they have a place and a purpose, and that is upstairs to protect the courtrooms, and to tell me that I am subjecting myself to search and seizure because I came in here to go to the bathroom, or came in here to go to the mapping department, is not the way we should be as a county. So I, I make a strong recommendation that we have funds to remove those, put them upstairs, it's always been told that Judge Coward has that order, we've searched for that order, we haven't found an order yet.
Right.
Okay, so, there's no order there.
There is an order, I mean, I've read the order, and I've had it, and I thought I shared it with you a couple of years ago, that I can, I'll get that, I mean, whatever that order is, I don't remember what it says, that's why I haven't said anything, I don't remember exactly what that order says off the top of my head.
But courthouse security is to secure the courtrooms, not every office in that, in this building. It's easier to do it at the main entrance, that's why they're there, so, I strongly recommend that we remove those metal detectors and put them upstairs where they belong.
And then number one thing, about the capital improvement plan, number one item on that was justice center, a hundred million dollars.
Seventy-one million, I think, is what I, yeah.
But that was the number one identified thing by those professionals.
And we're gonna Band-Aid, I mean, the jail, there's some things in here for the jail that they need, Sheriff's told me, he said, John, that jail is, 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 and I honestly believe that with the right investment for a justice center, a new jail, that that would be making money. We subcontract meals for the inmates at the jail, we do, I mean, the jail is in bad shape, I mean, and so, that's another conversation piece that...
As you can see on that, we, we had to move money, I moved money from other parts of the jail, like cost in the jail, like overtime or part-time, and moved it to maintenance, Derek, what are maintenance go up from, on their, like, building and property maintenance? I think we're up to sixty thousand dollars, I mean, it's all the time, like, the other day, you know, we've searched around, we, we went with the local plumber instead of one in Asheville, saved us quite a bit, but it's still five thousand here, or seven thousand here for pumps and plumbing and, you know, electrical issues, things like that, so we're, it's nickel and diming us to death, the jail is, as far as the...
What are you gonna do with the drone? What are you gonna do with the drone?
The drone, it's something that we've requested, it's a drone package, so it's actually two drones, one larger drone, one small drone, the small drone will be used as far as, like, with our SWAT team and things like that, we can put it through buildings to send in, to buildings or things like that, if we have a search warrant or a hostage situation, things like that. The larger drone, we will use it for several things, like searching for missing persons, searching for fugitives, SWAT team operations, like the last one that we had, you may have read about it, I think it was in the, some of the local media and stuff, where we had a fugitive out of Georgia, you know, there's, I guess he has some murder charges or something down there, we had to request wildlife, because they have a drone, you know, to come there, so it's putting up for operations, you know, my biggest thing is, as you know, you know, people like my parents, you know, want to run in with the Project Lifesaver tour, we've had several times this year where people have left their residences, you know, some that have committed suicide, and we're trying to look for, for these people, so these drones are specialized, you know, as far as searching grid patterns, camera systems, things like that, the cost of the drone, you know, I know if you look at it, it's a little over thirty, you know, that's, the camera equipment and things like that on them are very expensive. We also have to go, I got an email for a recommendation for law enforcement agencies not to use foreign, you know, drones that are manufactured in foreign countries, spoke with Nick Loft House, he's kind of does our technology stuff, there, I think there's only four, is what he said, manufacturers for these type of drones in the US, they're, you know, they're more expensive, but it covers training for four operators, also they have to be licensed through the FAA, so it covers all that as far as training and things like that for them to get their FAA license, but, you know, essentially, search is, you know, is the biggest thing that we use it for, you know, SWAT callouts, standoffs, search warrants, you know, and we can use it for surveillance for, for, you know, as far as dealing with drug issues or things like that, as far as surveillance for our operations.
Um, no, I just, there again, just like the fire department, I've told the sheriff and every law enforcement officer, you count on me to have your back, I am very grateful for the job that y'all do, it's, and everything else, it's just, I have to, I have to look at our freedoms and our rights, and, and a lot of, lot of supporters agree that, that there's a better place for those, and seeing those two vacancies, two officers out here, I just think that those officers would be much greater to your agency not standing there.
Yeah, and it's hard to recruit, like I said, right now, I have a one courthouse security officer, and I have a rogue deputy position, hoping we have one in the jail, and, you know, it's just tough to hire people nowadays, we're seeing that a lot, we've done well compared to what it was when we first took over, you know, but I've had once recently that leave for money, you know, one went to Jackson County, one the other day in the jail, said he left to, to go into, pursue a career in real estate, because he says, you know, we're paying him sixteen seventy-nine an hour, starting to pay in the jail, and, you know, he's like, my, you know, I guess it's a significant other wants to buy a house, things like that, and I, I just can't afford it, so, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can on recruiting and stuff like that, but it is tough for all the positions, and, you know, like I said, the courthouse position, I'm having a tough time finding, you know, ones to stand here every day.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, so, thank you, but that's my take on that one. I'm, I'm just gonna go over one more thing that, that is somewhat, I think now's the time to talk about it, not next week in the public hearing. The twenty-four budget and the salaries and benefits was thirty-one million, nine hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred dollars, this was an increase by one million, eight hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars from twenty-three budget. Twenty-five budget salaries and benefits is thirty-three million, thirty-two thousand, sixty-one dollars, increase of one million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars from twenty-four, which, doing the math, that is the COLA increase and the step increase, is that correct, Manager? Or Ms. Lori?
It'd be plus retirement increase.
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
I mean, there's all kinds of increases in there, there's retirement, which is out of our control.
Okay.
People may make different health insurance selections, they may be single on this plan year, but then get married and have kids and go to family, which is more costly, which impacts our, you know, salary fringe benefits, so...
Okay. How many county employees retired in the last budget cycle? Anybody know? Well, that's information that somebody can, I don't expect these answers right off the bat, because these are not, um, so, I know I've been to several retirement parties of county employees, and if we didn't hire anyone to replace them, how can we be on the same pattern with salaries and benefits as we have year after year? It seems to me like the salaries and benefits without considering the pay increases, with having employees retire and, and no replacement for those people, somewhere along the line we would start going down on salaries and benefits to offset that, and that's why I'm asking, how many employees retired in the last budget cycle? And, and the little topic that got very heated in the meeting in November, Mr. Manager, there's nothing in that budget to offset the overstaffing that you said we had.
John, I don't wanna go down this road.
I understand, but I have to, because, I, I'm not here to argue, I was told that it was never said, it was said, now, if you said that by a error or something, I owned my mistake, Mr. Manager, I owned it, and it did get out of hand, I was very frustrated, I don't like being called, and I call it a politically correct liar.
All right, let's, let's be cool here.
I am, I'm not, I'm not...
I'm just talking about the whole conversation.
Yeah.
It's, it's, to me, it's a private conversation that's been publicized, and...
Well, it was publicized when I got attacked, Mr. Chairman.
I understand that, and, but to bring... I understand that, and, but bringing it back up at this time...
Well, we're in the budget process, I have to ask this question. There's no adjustment to this if, look, you either own your conversation and say that you said it and it should have never been said, that's all I'm asking for. I know what I was told, I know what I'm looking at, and I think it's only fair to clear the air so we can move on. Now, we've had this conversation, Mr. Chairman.
We have, we have.
And it was, you were not in the room when this conversation was happening, you never heard any part of the conversation.
That's correct.
Okay, well, there are people in this room that heard it. And I don't care if it's a mistake, it's a mistake, but don't call me a politically correct liar when it came out in a conversation, in a meeting. That's all I'm asking for. Clear it up.
But, but he's, I'm not gonna speak for him, what I'm just saying is that, to me, it's between you two adults to correct what you feel was a correction or incorrection. And I don't mind being in the same room when y'all talk about this, but it's, for me, it's uncomfortable to talk about this type of thing that happened so many months ago back in November. I think we've got more pertinent things to talk about, and I know this is really bothers you, but it's more pertinent things to talk about as a board than personal things that occurred last year. And as Chairman, I'd like to move this on to one of your last questions, be it, if that's the last one, that we would go ahead and finish this tonight, not, not y'all's conversation, but finish the conversation of what this meeting was about.
Mr. Shields, this is the conversation. I have a budget to listen to next week.
Yes.
This budget includes salaries and benefits. If we are overstaffed, it needs to be corrected. If we're not overstaffed, then it needs to be cleared up that, no, I misspoke, and let's move on. That's all I'm asking for.
And what I'm saying is, as Chairman, that's up to him to correct that notice.
Mr. Chairman, my recommended budget proposes the level of staffing that we need to be at. So if we're still misunderstanding each other, it was the same misunderstanding that you had with me last November.
I didn't, Mr. Manager, I didn't say it.
Well, I'm...
You said it.
This budget is recommending the level of staffing that I think we should, that I think this organization needs.
Okay, so, uh...
I can respect that, I can respect your thoughts.
Well, I mean, I can't move forward until this is cleared up, I mean, that's...
No, but it's not a commissioner meeting agenda piece to move forward.
Okay.
I think you two adults have to move forward on your own and, Gary Shields, as Chairman, I don't want in your personal business or misunderstanding or understanding something. It's just not, I don't think it's what we're about as a team or as a unit, and that has to be sorted out with adults or two adults. And I said I'd be glad to sit in any meeting with you, but I wasn't there, but I can still sit there. But you two gentlemen are adults, you two, it can never be resolved or to hit to the level that you're wanting, it won't be resolved, what I'm hearing, to the level that you want. So we need to move this meeting on. Thank you for all the information tonight, and thanks for what everybody else has done tonight and your input, too. And I'm, we don't have anything else, I'm up for adjournment.
You got any input?
Well, I've been in meetings where we were, who stated we were overstaffed.
Right.
Okay, that's all I was after.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mr. Shields shared that with me, but that's still...
Well, because, listen, let's talk about it, what, let's, let's talk about what was said, I, I want to know.
Yeah, but we're on, we're in a public arena, and I think those type of things need to be handled in a private arena.
But I respect that, Mr. Chairman, I respect however you want it presented.
A private arena is, to me, you two gentlemen, or three, Paul, but, but we're, we're on the camera here, and I think we work good as a group, and, and I think as county commissioners, we have the responsibility, and, and we all agree with what I'm about to say. We, we agree to disagree in a respectful manner. If you elaborate on something so long, it will move out of that arena, and it become who said what. And at this time, if everybody's through, I'd like for someone to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Chairman. Second.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All of them agreement, raise your hands.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Well, let's say, correction on that on the deputies, we do have just two deputies in detention here, sir, because we had a third deputy put a resignation in, but she...
Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Two deputies, I want to ask you.